Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here to kick off the session after a long weekend. OCC has filed testimony on six of the bills that are up today. SB 6, SB 222, SB 224, SB 225, SB HB 5014, and the one on both spoofing and I think that's it. Oh, and then SB 847. With me is Rich Sobolousky from the Office of Consumer Counsel. Rich is head of the technical analysis for OCC and is one of the company's leading experts on water regulation. So on the water bills, please demand to ask about particular questions you may have. I just want to talk first briefly on the net neutrality bill. What we have heard from consumers again and again is that they want their Internet to be free and open and access to be unfettered. We had a hearing on this, just this topic, last year, and I know many of you were there, many of you were not, but we also had a bill last year. And again, we see this bill that I understand is again sponsored by Senator Duff. And so in reviewing this proposal, I asked a couple of questions, which I always think about with respect to consumers, which is who determines how you use the Internet? Who decides what content you can view and when? Will there be fast lanes or slow lanes? Will Internet providers be free to slow up or throttle applications? And will your access to the Internet on your mobile device be the same as the protections on your fixed device at home? That's the essence of the open Internet debate. In short, I support net neutrality. And I'm pleased that Connecticut is once again leading the way on this. I would note that as of two weeks ago, 34 states and the District of Columbia introduced 120 bills and resolutions with respect to net neutrality through last year's legislative session, and four, Oregon, California, Vermont, and Washington, have passed net neutrality laws. Others, governors and legislators have restricted when the states can contract with Internet service providers and requiring that they also ascribe to net neutrality principles. This bill also contains provisions with respect to ensuring privacy. And I would note that Internet privacy is one of these issues that it's really a bipartisan issue. I spoke recently, I was just quoted in Communications Daily about how this issue has become one of the hot-button issues in Washington this year. The FCC is doing some work on it, but in both these situations, the Federal Communications Commission is taking some steps, but they're taking a long time to ensure privacy. In the meantime, we see breach after breach and various ways consumers are harmed. I would note that the telecom providers at your first hearing noted that we need a national standard, but we're not getting national standards anytime soon. And I think the states are very often incubators for the ideas that end up at the federal level. And I see Connecticut as being a leader in this area, and I support the bill. With respect to spoofing, really the same argument. Again, this is something that consumers are really, really angry and upset about. It impacts their privacy. It's an incredible nuisance and a hassle and can actually use up your minutes, which can be a particularly threatening thing if you're a consumer with limited income or has limited data. And this is another area where we see bipartisan focus and bills in many, many, many different states, and I hope Connecticut will join that. Finally, with respect to the bill regarding deregulation of the state's telecom providers, I just want to make sure I'm quoting the right bill number. SB 847. You know, this is primarily about our overwhelming and largest phone company, Frontier, and we continue to have concerns about deregulation of our state's phone company and particular provisions that repeal the alt-rage, the alt-rage scenario that we have, which gives PURA some limited jurisdiction over issues. And so again, I don't see any positive consumer impact of repealing all regulation of virtually every aspect of our phone companies. So maybe with that, I'll turn it over to Rich Sobolousky to talk about the water bills, and then we'll take questions. Is that all right?
Good morning. I'm Richard Sobolousky. I'm the supervisor of utility financial analysis at the Office of Consumer Counsel. On Bills 222 and 224, OCC filed joint testimony with the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. On 222, we have opposed the bill as it will likely lead to increased rates for our clients, the existing water company customers, and we question paying a premium on systems that are in need of some significant repairs. The biller may or may not allow PURA and OCC and other stakeholders' involvement in setting the appropriate purchase price. Many of these times, this legislation has been written in other jurisdictions. It's basically the average of some appraisals that are done on a fair value basis using a few different methodologies. So if this bill was to go forward, we think that it should be adjusted to include some language that allows PURA, OCC, and others to look at the status and state of the existing system and adjust the purchase price for needed repairs in the long term for the system. Our view on the fair values, we've seen in various jurisdictions how this has led to some significant rate increases for the water company or wastewater company customers. We've seen 20% and 30% increases based on these acquisitions. So we generally do not support this bill. On 224, the lead service line, we generally oppose the bill, but we propose that PURA have a generic proceeding with the water companies, the Department of Public Health, and other stakeholders to look into the exact specific situation on lead service lines. We really don't know the number of service lines and to what degree those need to be We really need to look into what would be the best way to go about that, as these lead service lines, a portion is owned by the customer. So having the water company take responsibility, both financially and legally going forward, is a large step. So we believe that having a generic docket with PURA would be the best way to go about that. In regards to 5014, we support the bill, and we ask that it be expanded to require notice to customers of the regulated water companies. Right now, while PURA may ask the utilities to provide notice to the customers that are being acquired when we have a water merger or acquisition, currently, there's no statutory requirement for such notice unless there's a rate impact as a result of the docket. Usually, in those proceedings, PURA will set the rates for the newly acquired systems, and if there's a rate change, then a notice would have to go out to customers, but otherwise they do not. So in addition to the municipal and legislative leaders who would be receiving a notice if this legislation was passed, we believe that all customers of the water company should also receive such notice. Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your testimony here today. With regard to the net neutrality bill, you mentioned that four states have already implemented net neutrality laws. Would you recommend any of the four as the model for what Connecticut is looking to do?
I believe California has the most comprehensive bill. But I think what we've got before us is, I believe, modeled on the California bill, if I'm recalling my conversations.
Revisiting some of the issues that we had last year, the industry purports that they are basically addressing all these needs without legislation. What's been your experience in the state of Connecticut with any issues relating to net neutrality?
We haven't heard of any issues yet, and I think it's wonderful that the ISPs are adhering to net neutrality principles. However, incursions into net neutrality are often going to be subtle, and they're going to be small, and there's no law prohibiting it. So while, again, I think it's terrific if that's what's happened thus far, there's certainly no guarantee that that's going to happen going forward. And, you know, there's a lot of economic incentive for creating fast lanes and slow lanes. There's a lot of money to be made in creating, you know, a super-fast lane for Netflix versus Amazon Prime, just as an example. So that's why I think that it behooves us to do something before it becomes a problem. We've been through this before. We know there's been issues in the past, so.
And with regard to federal preemption, what's been the experience of the four states that have passed legislation? Have they come up against the federal issue?
Yeah, and I think that was not unexpected. There's very much an open question as to what is the, if we see federal legislation, would that be the ceiling or the floor for what states can do? Which implies that it may or may not be preempted, and no one can get up here and tell you that it's definitely going to be one way or the other. No one knows. Some of those states are facing lawsuits from the FCC and the U.S. government. Again, not unexpected, but, you know, it's one of those things that it's good to be fifth. We can see what happens to the others that go ahead of us.
I kind of like that idea of not being the beta tester and everything.
Yeah.
If I might just one question on the water-related bills, 222 and 224. You mentioned that you opposed 222 because of the process that is mapped out in the bill. Do you have any thought about a way? I would argue that the two water bills are well-intentioned because they're dealing with the issues of small water companies, municipalities in this case, that may not be in a position to make the infrastructure investment they would otherwise, and might be amenable to the growing trend to have the bigger companies take over. Do you have a suggestion on how we might accomplish that end, if you agree with it, without the PURA framework it's describing in the bill?
Well, I would just say that I agree that the bills are certainly well-intentioned. It's always our concern to balance the needs of consumers in the various companies. Certainly, you know, we're just nervous about small, underfunded water companies that need significant investment being sort of taken over at a very high price that then passes on those costs with respect to needed upgrades to the customers of the big acquiring water company. Just because they're big doesn't mean that those costs should be passed on to the existing ratepayers. But I will let Mr. Sobolousky talk about the particulars of the bill, because we did have some ideas.
Thank you. Here, we're talking, I think, for the most part, we're not really talking about the smaller systems. These municipality systems could be 100 customers, or they can be 50,000, 100,000 customers, you know? It's really a huge specter of where we are. I think PURA, as a result of the proceeding, should have the ability to adjust the appraised value that was done by the appraisers. The appraisers who do this, they're really not doing this from a regulatory viewpoint the way we normally value systems for rate-making purposes. Quite often, they're multiples of what we normally would allow for the value of a system in rates. So if you're requiring some of these systems that require some major repairs over the next five or 10 years, the way this has been happening in other states is that they're paying a premium for the system, then they're being faced with huge improvements after. We've heard the horror stories from other commissions, other consumer advocates, where they're paying double of what they are for their existing systems, and then they require another multiple of that to be in repairs. Depending on how you allocate those costs going forward, you know, in some states, I don't think it's proposed here, but in other states, they allow some of these municipals to create sweetheart deals for their customers, where all the other customers were paying for their improvements over some period of time. So I think it's important that the companies know what they're facing when they take over these systems, and that PURA safeguard existing customers from that and either develop a rate plan so they know what the customers of the municipality will be paying going forward. I think that's one of the things, and having the ability to adjust the purchase price. On the 224, I agree, it is trying to be helpful, and I think we have some creative solutions, possibly, to that, where the cost doesn't fall on all existing ratepayers to replace someone's private property. PURA has some creative ways of doing ratemaking for possibly these people who have this improvement. Like we had with the gas expansion, we put them on a separate rate for some period of time. So maybe possibly something like that could be done. If the lead service line for individual was replaced, they could pay a higher rate for 10, or 15, or 20 years. Or it could be some on-the-bill financing like we do for conservation or something like that. So I think it needs to be explored exactly what the problem is, how many customers there are, and who's really interested in taking advantage of this. You know, are you really forcing the water company to replace lead service lines on the customer's side, or is it something that's voluntary? I think now it's voluntary, and how that's reflected in rates for all customers is really the issue.
Well, thank you for that. As co-chair of the Public Health Committee, I'm very concerned about the number of lead pipes we have in our system and the potential health impacts, so I'm a little bit less inclined to a voluntary approach. But I think that, you know, you've come into this hearing opposing both bills, but drilling down a little bit, you have good solutions, ways for us to improve upon them. We've seen what other states have done wrong, but in terms of the scale of the municipal system, the PURA protocol, the ability to protect ratepayers, I know I would welcome your input on how we might get these bills right, rather than passing them off for another year, because I think we have urgent water infrastructure issues, just like every other infrastructure issue in this state, transportation, energy, you name it. This is something we need to address in the near term, and we need OCC's assistance and support if we're going to make that happen.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly, Representative. We always are open to and continue to work with our colleagues at PURA and in the water industry. It's a very collegial industry, and it's a great deal of cross dialogue.
Representative Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, ma'am, for appearing today and your testimony and filling in the blanks for us. I do have a couple of questions regarding the net neutrality bill.
Of course. Thank you. Yes, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you.
Great. You spoke about this bill being modeled after the California bill, correct?
That's my understanding, but I would probably defer to, I assume Senator Duff may be testifying today, but that's the last I checked. That's the one that's the most comprehensive, to my knowledge.
Great. And it is true that at the moment, there is a lawsuit, which you also testified that is going on in California. And it's true that none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know how that is going to turn out at the end of the day. But it is also true to my, at least the information I have, that the California Attorney General has put a moratorium on the bill because they want to wait for the outcome. Is that correct?
I don't know, but I'd be happy to follow up on that if you'd like.
Okay. Well, it is true.
Okay.
And I wonder, you know, my red flag goes up, if the Attorney General is not willing to go forward until the decision is made, I would guess that he has some expectations that maybe might be a little different. And another question I have is the federal law that we currently have for net neutrality protection. They primarily protect us against what at this moment?
The federal law?
Yes, because there are federal net neutrality laws in place.
Well, the FCC has said they have no authority to regulate this area, and what they have said is that if a consumer feels that its provider has violated a pledge, the terms of its contract, if they have a, let's say, I contract with, you know, provider X, and it says, well, there's net neutrality, and there's a violation, they've said, well, that consumer can go to the FTC, the Federal Trade Commission. That's a very cumbersome process, and that's a very, it's an agency that's not particularly well-funded. They haven't done a lot of enforcement, and so to me, that's not a satisfactory answer to a consumer. And that's also only if the consumer has, if there's net neutrality principles within the contract. And I would just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I want to.
Go ahead, finish, please.
No, I was just thinking back to last year's hearing, and, you know, why is this a problem? And why are we talking about something that seems sort of hypothetical? But I know it's still on the committee's website, because I just saw it when I was looking. Austin McCord, who is the founder of Dato, gave a really compelling testimony. He was the last speaker of the day, so it's actually easy to find, about how, I mean, he's the American success story, right? The Connecticut success story. Homegrown, started a business in his parents' basement, went on to found this enormous company that's now worth like over $1 billion. And he said, when they started out, his company is a very data-intensive usage, and they were terrified that someone was going to start throttling them because of the amount of data that they used, and it would have killed their business. And so I think, you know, the potential impact of net neutrality violations, it may be small, it may be insidious, but it's very much on the mind of small business owners who are using this kind of data. And so, you know, I'd hate to see the next Austin McCord not have the same opportunity that we have been able to provide to, you know, the actual Austin McCord.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, and, you know, fear is a powerful, it's a powerful emotion. And I'm in business myself, and I have a lot of fears as well, you know, from the overreach for the government. But that doesn't stop me from running my business, and it certainly didn't stop the gentleman you're speaking of, and he is what I would consider very successful in his business. And you also testified that at this moment, we don't have any glaring examples of violations of net neutrality principles. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
And so I just have a problem with, you know, creating a law looking for the crime. And if the crime hasn't taken place, and there's something that we don't have any fear for or to worry about at this point, I mean, fear is just, you know, concern about, you know, the future that may or may never happen. And if it isn't happened, hasn't happened, isn't currently happening, you know, I just don't see the need for this type of law. So I'm sorry to stand, you know, here and say these things, but I just have a big problem with creating something that's not necessary.
Respectfully, if I may, if you refer to my testimony from last year, I actually listed, it's not a hypothetical fear. There were times, you know, we've sort of had net neutrality principles come and go at the federal level, and there have been violations. And I'd be happy to resubmit it. My testimony from last year listed, I think, 10 examples of actual net neutrality violations before we saw the laws that were put into place in, I believe it was 1995, and that were subsequently repealed. So I don't think it's a hypothetical concern. I think there's been examples in the past. But I also think we're in an environment where there's a lot of scrutiny on this issue. There's a lot of public angst about it. And so, you know, hopefully, as I say, our ISPs will not, Internet service providers will not violate net neutrality principles, but there's just no guarantees going forward. And I think that example from Austin McCord of, you know, their real concern about what could have happened to them is a good reason to make sure we're providing what seems pretty basic to me, making sure the Internet's, everyone has equal access to the Internet. But I, you know, respectfully understand your position as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm certainly keeping an open mind. I'm going to listen to all the testimony, and I'm going to, of course, read the language of the bill that comes forward and, you know, speak with my colleagues on this. But I really appreciate you standing up and giving your opinion, because it also is part of the valuable testimony that we're going to be looking at. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Representative Biscapal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative.
I was, I'm curious about competition, you know, the net neutrality bill, about the regs that are going to be imposed if this bill would pass. Has there been any evidence in the four states that have passed this where competition is stifled? This week, I will probably receive two or three things in the mail saying, I provide, go with me, I will provide cheaper, faster Internet at a third of the cost of what you're paying. I'll probably get two or three different companies, you know, offering that. I see this as a, you know, as I read these principles of net neutrality, I see this as stifling that kind of competition. And as a consumer counsel, I just was, I'm a little bit surprised by your stand on this bill.
Well, first of all, I'm delighted to hear that you've gotten multiple offers, because most consumers don't have multiple offers. They have, at best, one or two providers, so there isn't a lot of room to maneuver. And there's a lot of consumers who only have one. So I think I got to look at competition from that way. If I, you know, if I only have a choice of, you know, a lot of places have Frontier as their sole choice, and whatever Frontier does or doesn't, it's kind of like, well, that's what you got. So I guess on the competition issue, I'm not sure we have enough competition to sort of informally enforce net neutrality. And with respect to stifling competition, you know, we had net neutrality rules that were in place or about to be in place for a number of years, and we didn't see any stifling of competition there. And again, these are principles that, to me, what I understand is most of the industry is adhering to already. So I don't see it as an additional burden, but I do see it as sort of insurance. And I would note, you know, there's a significant privacy portion of this bill as well, and just to remind, I mean, not that you, there, you know, there's a lot of examples of privacy violations. Just look at Facebook. I was just discussing that with someone in the hall this morning. So I think there's a lot of real harm that's been demonstrated in the privacy context.
And you mentioned Austin McCord. I do remember his testimony. We agree, it was pretty dynamic and good testimony. But you remember, I questioned him. He came in pre-net neutrality as an entrepreneur competitor in his mom's basement, I believe. He started this.
Yeah, right. It's a great story.
And so he came in pre-net neutrality, built his company, you know, we call it the Wild West of the Internet, and built his company up to where it is. He's probably here today. But anyway, he built his company up pre-net neutrality, and that neutrality kicks in. He, as a businessman, a smart businessman, he's going to protect himself. He sees net neutrality as a protection now for him as a player, one of the bigger players. He fears another Austin McCord coming in behind him as an entrepreneur cutting into his business in the Wild, if we return to so-called Wild, Wild West. And I questioned him on that after his testimony. I said, you came up pre-net neutrality, and you did quite well. So another Austin McCord without net neutrality, I think, would have that same opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if that's a question, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members? Seeing none, Representative D'Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in to testify today. I got in here a little bit late, so perhaps I missed, I don't want to make you be redundant, but my understanding is that much of the objection to this is that this regulating of the ISPs should be done not at the state level, but at the federal level. Could you speak to that, or have you done so already?
I'm happy to repeat it. Yeah, I did. I think we all agree a national standard would be the ideal, we're just not getting one. And there's no evidence that we're going to get one with respect to net neutrality anytime soon. And so in the meantime, you know, states are, as I said, are frequently the incubator of the ideas that roll up to the federal government. And Connecticut's been a leader on a lot of these important thought issues. And we know that there have been 34 states and the District of Columbia have introduced bills, four have passed them in the last year. And so, you know, this isn't a crazy idea. This is sort of following the national trend at the state level with hope that it will create pressure to create a national standard. I mean, I think we all know that's what we need. But in the absence of it, I'm just, I'm very concerned about consumers being exposed.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony, thanks for coming in. Representative Leslie Zupkis, followed by Stephen Hernandez.
Good morning, Chair Needleman and Arcanti and Ranking Member Ferraro, and distinguished members of the Energy and Technology Committee. I'm Representative Leslie Zupkis, I represent the 89th District, and I would ask if you would allow me to turn my time over to my constituent, Mr. Dykman. However, I'd just like to say one quick thing, we're here in strong support of House Bill Number 5015. It is regarding when water companies come onto your property, your private property, they are allowed to just walk on your property. And I can tell you, as a mom of a young girl who is home by herself sometimes, if somebody walked on their property, they'd probably get 911 call. But also, I just, no one should be able to walk on your property. We are not trying to stop anything that they do, they do really great work, and we all want clean drinking water, we're just asking for a notice to be notified when the water company comes onto your property.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Ranking Member Ferraro, and members of the committee for allowing you to testify today. My name is John Dykman, I live at Four Lakeview Road in Prospect, Connecticut, a home that I've lived in for 25 years or so. It's a quiet street in a fairly rural area. I realize that I am in a public watershed area, so I am responsible and also consider myself an environmentalist, but I'm also very strongly an advocate for property rights. Back in May, the water company did come out and leave a brochure on my door, I have a ring doorbell, which a lot of people have now, so I was able to see that they waited 42 seconds and then just walked in the backyard. My wife works from home, and she was very startled, you know, she didn't answer the door because she was on the phone, and she saw them in the backyard. Two men, very large men, with a truck, of course, and they do have name badges, so they were doing things professionally, but the fact is, going in the backyard and then being confronted by the homeowner and the dog barking and everything else is very startling. The only notice that I've been able to determine that they've made was a call to the police department in the spring that says, we're going to be in town, so that when the police department does get these phone calls, that they would at least know. None of us knew. I have friends, I have businesspeople in the area that did not know that this was going on, and apparently, it is done every year. They have a series of 600 properties that they go on to, call it a survey, I call it an inspection, and for whatever they're looking for, they were standing there looking at my septic system, which is fine, I have it pumped every three years, I'm a responsible property owner, and just asking that there be some type of notice. Now, I'm not a customer of Connecticut Water, I have a well in, in the front yard and a septic in the backyard. So, I would be more than happy to provide them my phone number, or my email, whatever they would want, I would love to be put on a list to say, hey, we're coming out, and I would gladly escort you on my property. In this day and age, with all the things that happen in our world, I think it's too risky for them to just assume that it's okay to walk in someone's backyard. I'd rather escort them, I'd have no problem, I, you know, anytime they have the right to do it according to law, I realize that, but, and if there was an emergency, I wouldn't block them, I don't imagine what emergency could be on my property. But I, I realize there's a law in place that allows them to do this, I'm asking the water companies to take it a little bit step further and be responsible in their management of this program. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from committee members?
That's amazing.
Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Stephen Hernandez? All right, we'll go to Senator Champagne. Is he here? No, Representative Gale...
Representative Gale. Oh, no. Thank you, Chairman Needleman, Chairman Arcanti, and distinguished members of the Energy and Technology Committee. I'm Senator Dan Champagne, and I'm here to testify in favor of proposed SB Number 225 and Act concerning spoofing. Spoofing, as many of you know, is a common technique used by scammers. When your phone rings, you'll see a number similar to your own, which increases the likelihood you'll answer it. In some cases, your own number appears on your caller ID. This is a common problem that my constituents have been telling me about, and basically, anybody here that has a cell phone or a house phone, you've been dealing with this. I mean, call after call after call, there's no problem with your credit, we just have questions for you, and, and I'm looking for ways to solve this issue. Basically, it's become a nuisance, and people are being scammed out of money. You know, I'm going off my testimony a little bit, but the, this morning, as I walked into work, I was told of, you know, the elderly person that was scammed out of $24,000. You know, this is a non-stop problem, and any ideas beyond what I'm going to present today that you have, or anybody else has, I would love to hear it. So, basically, when you answer this call, the person on the other end knows that an actual person is there, and usually, they try to get you to divulge personal information and send them money. Sometimes this is a pure scam, sometimes this is a business trying to get you to transfer to another service. Even pressing a button to opt out of future calls to talk to a live person just confirms that the caller that they have reached is an active line. I don't know if anybody's ever stayed on the line and actually took, and spoke to somebody. I did that once, and I was yelled at. Basically, what's your problem, you know, we're trying to do business here. People can currently report unwanted calls to the Federal Trade Commission, and spoofing was made, you know, spoofing was made a Class A misdemeanor here in Connecticut last year, and that's great, but it hasn't stopped the problem. Maximum penalties conviction of a Class A misdemeanor in Connecticut are one year in prison and a fine of $2,000, but trying to find the person and bring him to justice is difficult. I believe this bill would, with further strengthen the law, the bill would make spoofing a violation of Connecticut's Unfair Trade Practices Act. This bill would allow victims to bring class action suits against the spoofers. To establish a coup de violation, attorneys in Connecticut have to show that their clients sustained damages as a result of unfair or deceptive act in trade or commerce, and when conduct is determined to be unfair and deceptive, it can then justify an award of compensatory or punitive damages. Passing this measure will send yet another strong message that Connecticut protects its consumers and will not tolerate those who try to deceive the public. As a final thought, though not included in this proposal, I would have preferred to include a provision in this bill which would hold phone companies accountable for their, these scams, which are perpetrated on their watch. That accountability is a federal jurisdiction issue, so I did not include it in this bill. I'll talk to some, if these, if we can't get these to stop, I'm going to be reaching out to our federal representatives. You know, I, I think the phone company should have the technology. If I'm calling from my, my phone number, and I change it to make it look like it's somebody else's phone number, you know, there's got to be, some sort of technology that can register that and stop the call from going through. I put myself on the no-caller list because I don't want these calls. I don't have the time to take these calls, and, you know, the spoofers are basically just ignoring that. I want to thank you for your past efforts to protect state residents from spoofing, and I hope this bill will continue to, on a path that's going to protect people's wallets in Connecticut. Any questions?
Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your, your testimony for this bill. I introduced a spoofing-related bill a few years ago, basically offering a watchdog reward for somebody who turns them in. So, what I do now, and I, the only reason I keep a, a landline phone these days is, as a legislator, I want to offer an opportunity for people to reach me. 99% of the calls I have on there are these messages. Rarely do I hear from constituent, I'm always pleased to hear from constituent, and it's even more of a pleasure when all your, all of your recorded messages are from these, these fraudulent firms. So, what I do when I get them on the phone these days, partially to keep them from calling me again, is I do follow through, and then I basically ask whoever's on the phone to give me the address of their organization, so I can alert the FBI and have them come on by. Nobody's taken me up on it yet.
No.
And I'm actually amazed at how many nasty people there are working for these firms, who are not nice, and not only do they hang up on you, they swear before they do it. This is a real problem. I like the idea of having the phone companies take some responsibility, I do agree they have the technology. This is an intrusion on every citizen's privacy, and something ought to be done. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Representative Pettit?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to follow up on Representative Steinberg's comment, do you know that the phone companies have the technology to prevent someone from calling from a number, or is that out of their control?
No, I'm sure, there's got to be technology to compare the two, and I'm sure it can be done quickly, and if they don't, it would be nice if they could do that for the consumers. I mean, we, everybody in this room has received these phone calls, and we're being harassed nonstop. And you know what, if a phone company came out and told me, listen, we can stop these, and you'll never get another one, but you have to switch to us, I'd probably switch to them just to get rid of these phone calls.
Representative Ferraro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your testimony. I do agree, this is a huge problem. One day evening, I was sitting at home, and I received a phone call, and I went to my caller ID, and it was my phone number. So, I thought that was pretty odd. I have received complaints from constituents in my district where, and there's an elderly couple in Milford, Connecticut, who only, they only have their one phone, they don't have cell phones, and when a solicitor calls, and they are not interested, they tell them they're not interested, and they hang up the phone, they pick the phone up a minute later, and they're still on the phone giving their message. Their complaint was, being elderly, and if they had a medical emergency, they would have no way to call out, and it becomes now a safety issue as well. So, I do thank you for your testimony, and I hope to see this bill go forward, and anxious to see what the language is in the bill, and if we can support it, because the people do need protection from this. This is basically harassment. So, thank you very much.
And again, like I said, you know, when we put this final bill together, I would love the input, you know, if somebody else can come up with another brilliant idea that we can add into this, I would love to do that.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representative Buckley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your testimony. I've been sworn out quite a bit, too, and I think we've all faced some of that one way or the other. And, yeah, they swear at Santa Claus, too, it's unbelievable. I guess my concerns are, when we report these numbers, let's be honest, it's, it's going nowhere, right? We see this on the federal level, we report the number, the number doesn't change, they still call you, the same people still call you, same banks still call you, same phone banks, and the, I mean, I, I don't even keep a home phone line anymore, and as a good representative mentioned about keeping a line open for your constituents, Google Voice, by the way, works really, really well. I guess my question for you is, how, what do you see as a, an opportunity to, to make this work? We can report the numbers now, and you say the phone companies might have the technology, might not, I'd love if they do, too, I'd do the same thing, I'd switch in a second. Do you propose maybe something that we could do as a reporting the number on a, on a state level? Because these numbers aren't necessarily coming from, even though they might look like Representative Ferraro's number, they're coming from outside the country and then across the country. So, just thoughts on where you think, can we do something more on a state level, as you propose this on the state level, than we, than they do on the federal level currently?
Well, you know, this is one step I'm taking now, what I want to do is, I want to continue to research this, because, you know, I know when I, when I pull the phone records, my own records, and I look at the numbers, once in a while, it'll be a different number than the one that called me. And I'm wondering if that's the real number, and if it is, I'd love to just grab that one. I've tried calling these numbers back after they hang up.
Yeah, there's no way.
There's nothing. So, part of it is, is identifying who this is. And sadly, you know, some of this may have to take place on the federal level, and, you know, but I'm hoping that, you know, by us bringing this out, that the phone companies start to listen. This is such a big problem, we've been talking about this for years, and it's not stopping.
And would you, would you recommend maybe that it's just the robocalls in general should go away, or would that be, would that be that strict, is where you're looking?
If I'm on the no-call list, I shouldn't get any of those calls.
Me, too.
Right.
But I mean, there are people who have the, the robocalls that go out, and apparently, they're, they're working for someone, otherwise, they wouldn't be doing it.
Right.
But are you proposing that that would disappear entirely as well, because that seems to be the root of the, of the fraud?
I guess I'd have to look at everything. My, my main problem is when they, when they call me, and they get, use a, a separate number.
Right.
So, if you're calling me, say you want to do a robocall as a representative, and it says your name when it pops up, and, and the phone number you called me on is that phone number? See, I'm, I'm okay with that. It's when my phone number pops up, and I, I'm answering the phone, and I'm not the guy saying hi.
Fair enough, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representative Ferraro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, it's, yeah, about a month ago, you know, we were eating dinner, and the, my, my name came up as somebody calling me, and my wife says, why do, why do you always call during dinner? Why? This is falls probably under general advice, I did a, a term of duty, as it were, as a member of the FCC, intergovernmental advisory panel, and spoofing was, was, was a big deal then, it's a big deal now. Last year, the FCC fined about, it's like something, they issued about $240 million in fines to spoofers, and their, their approach seems to be, and was then, seems to be now, is that they go after individual companies, they, they focus on, you know, people, you have individual firms doing, doing wrong. So, you might want to try digging there, see like what it is, you know, why, why they're going after those firms, and, you know, what, you know, what rises to the level of something that's actionable by the FCC, and maybe so, so, you know, maybe just a, a war on two fronts approach, I mean, do what you can in Connecticut, but also look at how the FCC is sizing up people, and maybe make a complaint to them if they're, if they're, you know, bad actors in Connecticut that are really, you know, really abusing the system, you go after them, because it just, that's, because there, it always seems like I'm getting calls from the same, like, four people, you know, I mean, we've even nicknamed one of them Gladys, I mean, this woman's voice comes on all the time, so you might want to try digging there, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, any other questions for the senator? Representative Linehan?
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator, I want to commend what you're doing, what you're trying to do, it is a problem. You mentioned the, the problem you've experienced, it appears to be your own phone number that's calling you.
Right.
An issue I've run into several times now, particularly my home phone, which I use and invite constituents to call me on, numbers will pop up as local, say, Jewett City numbers or Sterling numbers, and I rush to get there thinking it's a constituent calling me, and then I hear a foghorn, and somebody says, it's, this is your captain speaking, you just want a trip to the bombus. Haven't been offered that yet from a constituent, as much as I love them, but does that also fall under the spoofing? Have you, have you encountered that as well, where it appears other people are calling you?
Yep.
That, from, and it's, it's not those actual people?
Yeah, this is a big part of it. So, you know, a lot of, you'll get an 860 number, and they'll actually use, I live in Vernon, so it'll be a lot of the 871, 875, 870. So, I'm thinking it is a constituent, and, or it's just somebody I know, so I answer the phone, and it ends up being, like you said, some company out, it's usually some problem with my credit card they want to fix, and, you know, I hang up on them, because I've, I've listened to them, and like everybody's reported, you know, you, you get people that are not very nice, when you tell them you don't want any more phone calls. And then, for the next few weeks, you just keep getting them over and over and over again.
Yeah, and I, I think this may be one way they're trying to skirt the do-not-call list.
Exactly what it is.
Looks like a local phone number, so I think that's problematic. On the flip side, too, on my cell phone, I've gotten a number of calls from people who said, you called me 15 minutes ago, don't leave a message, and never, never knew who this person was, never called them, so my number's appearing on other people's phones as if I'm calling them, and that's not the case. So, it's a, it's a problem, and appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Senator, for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Up next, Representative Mastrofrancesco, followed by Representative Rosario and Councilman Castillo. Castillo.
Can you hear me now? If I can say that whole thing again? Representative Gail Master Francisco, representing the 80th District, covering Wilkett and a part of Suddington. Mr. Chairman, ranking members, co-chairs and vice chairs, thank you for having us here today. Appreciate you having a public hearing and I am here today in support of Senate Bill Number 73. So I appreciate a public hearing on this particular topic. I did submit testimony, you do have it, as opposed to me reading my testimony. I'd like to give my time, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Michael Bruce. He is the coordinator for WLCT 96 in Wilkett and I'd like to give him my time so he can explain the bill.
Thank you, Gail. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Michael Bruce and as she stated, I am the coordinator for WLCT 96, which is a town-specific platform in the town of Wilkett for the people of the town of Wilkett. Like other municipalities in Connecticut, Wilkett Governmental TV became a town-specific platform made possible with a grant provided by the legislature. It complies with 16331 CC. We utilize that grant to make video in the town of Wilkett transparent to the people of the town of Wilkett. We currently are live on the cable channel. We are live continuously on Frontier and we have our own website, WLCT96.org. We run 24/7/365. The original grant was specified to promote and improve public education and governmental access. We've done that. We've done that now for five years. We made it clear in the enabling docket that all subsequent communications to DPUC, PURA, the Advisory Council, Comcast and the third-party access provider, that the intent of our channel was the transparency of our government. We have not and do not wish to become a community access provider. Our objective is to provide the townspeople of our community with information about their town. We maintain and enhance the equipment provided by grants and do not seek community access funding. Senate Bill 73, when enacted, will cost the general fund nothing, but will make a cable channel available to every town in the state qualified to be a town-specific platform. In addition to meetings of the boards and commissions, we do a myriad of other items: Veterans Day parades, carnivals, holiday tree lightings, and it goes on and on. The volunteers that tape these and then are put on our channel. In addition, we have a community scroll that also gives the current time, temperature. The system can provide up to the, up to the date information to the community either at the head end or off-site. We designed our efforts much the same way as Oxford, Woodbridge, Simsbury and other stations along the Connecticut Shore. Wilkett Governmental TV, since receiving the grant from DPUC and PURA, has made available all programming aired on its platform to Sky Cable 13 through the fiber optic connection. The community access provider has declined to air the signal even following repeated written requests. Many municipalities in Connecticut have the ability and have their platform aired 24/7/365 on their systems or will in the future. Some made possible by franchise renewal, some by state platforms, I'm sorry, some by state statute and some by agreement with the cable provider. There are town-specific platforms such as Wilkett who have the proper equipment and conditions and connections that are denied 24/7/365. Wilkett has proven itself capable for the past five years to provide the transparency of government. Any reasons could be resolved by passage of Senate Bill 73 and reasonable discussions. I stand ready to answer any and all questions and I make myself available as per the testimony on a telephone number and an email basis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you and thank you for coming up to the Capitol today. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Representative Rosario and Councilman Castillo. Yeah. And that will bring us to the end of the first hour. So after Representative Rosario's testimony, I'll start bouncing back and forth between the public official list and the public list. So following Representative Rosario will be John Emmera and Jerry Keegan.
Hi, good morning, Honorable Chairs and Ranking Members. My name is Christopher Rosario, State Representative for the 128th District in Bridgeport. I am honored to be here before you, testifying in support of HJA 57, which is a resolution establishing Seaview Village in Bridgeport as the Bridgeport Municipal Energy Savings Area. When I first found out about this program, I thought it was groundbreaking in nature and it would be a vehicle to provide jobs and opportunities for the people of the city of Bridgeport. So, like my colleague before, I want to yield my time to Councilman Castillo and also to Mr. Christie Duffy Acevedo, who's the CEO of Pequot Energy, who can better explain the project. Councilman?
How you doing? Fredo Castillo, Councilman, City of Bridgeport. Kind of excited. It's been six long years in this project that I've, I've put together through the leadership of Chris Duffy, Pequot. It's called Geothermal and Fuel Cells in Bridgeport. Means cutting the line for the undeserved people to pay their bills. The project was done through Anatoly Gervich, he's here, with no subsidy from the state. It was just, I brought it up to Anatoly, told him about geothermal. Chris Duffy came on board, he explained it, he did his research and he put up the money and he did it. And now it is a success village in the lower east end of Bridgeport and people are buying these condos, they're condos. So I'm very excited because I want to create jobs. I want to create jobs, I want to help our community to lower their bills. People are suffering, they're not able to pay their bills, they're choosing what they pay. They pay for food, they pay for gas, they pay for insurance for cars, or do they pay for bills? And I'm trying to bring the cost lower so people can, no longer have to choose on what to pay on a, on a, on a local level.
At this time, we're going to kick it over to Chris Duffy Acevedo so he can explain a little bit more about the project. You can hit the button over there if you'd like.
How are you? Gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'd like to recognize the Bridgeport folks who came up, Mr. Gervich, Ms. Lockhart, Mr. Duque, Mr. Vaningham and the others from the Bridgeport who came to support us on the day when they were working. Thank you very much.
Could you just identify yourself for the record?
Sure, I'm Christopher Duffy Acevedo. It's a pleasure to meet each of you. I suppose what I'm here to do is to reaffirm the Mesa Resolution, which is before you today on record. It's an exciting statement by the City of Bridgeport, a city that has historically embraced technology, more specifically green energy, with socioeconomic goals. Mr. Rosario and Mr. Castillo have put pen to paper after the fact. What I say by after the fact is the Mesa is actually not a proposition, but a resolution to recognize what has already been done with the thanks of the Gervich family and with the Lockhart family who have committed to making these condominiums affordable and resilient to the green energy standards of the United States government. And so I'm very grateful for each of these folks who have made this happen because not one individual makes this work. We're fortunate that the state of Connecticut is a leading enterprise with clean energy. We were fortunate to work with federal resources who have identified technology for our community. And what the Mesa wants to do is be able to have the state recognize that for the record so that we can scale clean energy within the City of Bridgeport, if not other areas, with the same competency and capacity that Mr. Rosario and Mr. Castillo have authored before you today. And if I can answer any questions, of course, I'm most grateful to do that.
Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Perron?
Hi, thank you very much for your testimony. Basically, the short question is, do other municipalities have this in the state of Connecticut? And if so, how is it working?
So, we speak of Mesa, it's not necessarily a technology, it's an embrace of technology. Other cities do have microgrid type of initiatives which are heavily subsidized. While we speak of Mesa, we're looking at a, an evolving idea which is based on a private partnership with the city or with public stakeholders in clean energy. To be short, the answer that you're looking for is, yeah, I suppose other cities do have it. This particular community that Mr. Gervich established is a gated community, its own little municipality, if you will, which has 100% clean energy that's resilient, sustainable to U.S. Department of Defense recognition. And it was done without subsidy. The secret to that subsidy-free opportunity is very curious and you'd probably want to know. Okay? So what it is, is that to achieve the return on investment on such an opportunity is you have to qualify technology at a discount. So if we're able to identify technology that works, we are able to purchase that with aggressive bargaining power to bring the technology onsite at a much lower rate than would be paid by government. And that discount affords us the subsidy that can't be taken from government. So that technology, if it performs through a COP, which is a coefficient of performance measurement, we're confident we can negotiate aggressively with the private manufacturer and that technology covers the difference of the subsidy.
And that this can't be done now, why?
It can be done. And that's why Mesa is being resolved to actually illustrate it and distribute that concept at a legislative level, at the leadership level that we're here today with.
So, just to clarify, what you're asking for is, you're not asking for, say, enabling legislation, but you're asking for just the, the understanding of this committee to...
Thanks, Mr. Perron.
To move forward with the concept?
Yeah, we're humbly asking for Mr. Representative Perron, for this committee to recognize Mesa and give resolution that it's, it's a success in Bridgeport and can have credibility which this committee can afford us would be very important to us and we would be most grateful.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Senator Niedeman?
I want to thank you all for coming. Thank you, Representative and Councilmen, and it seems like this is almost a too-good-to-be-true thing and it's great that you guys have put all this together and it's an example of how to make things work. And I just want to commend you and support your idea for the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
John Emmera, followed by Senator Kathy Austin.
Good morning, Representative Arcanti, Senator Niedeman, Senator Farmica and members of the committee. My name is John Emmera, I'm here with AT&amp;T. I'm pleased to provide some comments on Senate Bill 6 to you today. While AT&amp;T very strongly supports net neutrality and privacy protections for consumers, we respectfully oppose the committee bill because the legislation addresses issues that frankly are more appropriate for action by the U.S. Congress, are preempted by federal law and would hurt and confuse the very consumers that the legislation intends to protect. For more than a decade, AT&amp;T has supported an open internet. We operate our network in an open and transparent way and we will always do so. We will not block websites, we will not censor online content, we will not throttle or degrade internet traffic based on content, we will not discriminate in the transmission of internet traffic, period. These are the principles we believe in. They are published on our website and they are readily available for consumer review. Most importantly, they are legally enforceable commitments by both the Federal Trade Commission and by the state's attorney generals. Despite recent FCC actions, the protections which consumers have enjoyed for so long on the internet have not gone away. As John Liebowitz, the former chairman of the Federal Trade Commission testified in front of this committee a year ago and who served as the chairman of the FTC under President Barack Obama, the FTC and state attorney generals can enforce the commitments that are made by various companies. Now, states are preempted from regulating jurisdictionally interstate services like the internet. Where doing so would interfere with federal policy. That is a basic principle of conflict preemption enshrined in the supremacy clause. Both the FCC's 2015 net neutrality order and its 2017 order preempted state attempts to impose net neutrality obligations. And as the FCC's December 2017 order noted, it would be inconsistent not to also preempt state regulatory efforts that conflict with an FCC determination that a regulation doesn't apply in the first place. Additionally, the FCC's 2017 order restored the classification of broadband internet service access as an information service, meaning that under federal law, the states are prohibited from adopting or applying common carrier, public utility type rules to those services. Given the national and for that matter, global nature of the internet, the appropriate venue to address net neutrality legislation is the United States Congress, not the states. Only a new federal law can provide consumers with the lasting protections they want as well as provide regulatory certainty to the broader, to the broader internet industry, which will stimulate investment and grow our economy. I will say, a year ago, I testified in this committee on a similar piece of legislation and I will say the same thing I said a year ago. If you are going to act on this, what we'd urge you to do is to, is to urge members of Connecticut's congressional delegation to take action. We've been strongly trying to do that for more than a year and we're hopeful that will happen soon. I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Keegan from CTIA.
Co-chairs, members of the committee, I'm Jerry Keegan with CTIA. CTIA is the trade association for the wireless communications industry here in opposition to Senate Bill 6. Let me say from the outset that CTIA and its member companies support an open internet. To further that goal, we have been advocating for a bipartisan federal legislative solution to address this issue once and for all. But we oppose state-by-state regulation of broadband service, truly an interstate service, because it's unnecessary in light of the strong consumer protections in place today and because the FCC has preempted states from acting in this area. After the FCC's 2017 order, the Federal Trade Commission once again is empowered to police broadband providers and their service offerings and to bring any enforcement action against any provider that is acting unfairly or deceptively, not abiding by its terms or commitments of service. In addition, the FCC's current regulation in its 2017 order includes a transparency rule that requires providers to disclose to consumers information about their network management practices, their performance and other terms and conditions of service. In addition, the FTC can bring action against any provider that is acting anti-competitively as well as the U.S. Department of Justice, which enforces the nation's antitrust laws which preclude anti-competitive network management practices. More importantly, the Connecticut Attorney General can act under the consumer protection laws of general applicability against any provider that is acting unfairly, deceptively or not abiding by its terms and commitments of service. We oppose state legislation in this area also because the FCC in its 2017 order reaffirmed its finding in its 2015 order that broadband service is an interstate offering, in fact, a global offering, and preempted states from acting. State-by-state regulation of broadband service is untenable. In the mobile broadband world, would a state law be applicable where a user purchases its service, where the user is currently located, or where the tower that is transmitting the service is located? As you can see, a patchwork in this area would be untenable. As you heard, states have taken action on this issue. California enacted its legislation in September. That law was immediately challenged by the U.S. Department of Justice as well as groups representing broadband providers, including CTIA. Even before a hearing was held in that case, the California Attorney General stipulated to non-enforcement pending resolution of federal litigation on the 2017 order. For these reasons, we'd ask that you not move this bill. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your testimony. Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members?
I want to thank you both, and I appreciate the text. As somebody who runs a phone company, maybe you could talk a little bit about the spoofing issue?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So certainly, communications carriers, we share the same concerns that consumers do. First of all, we're all consumers. I get those phone calls at dinnertime and on my cellphone all the time from spoof numbers and the like. And certainly, we want customers to have a good experience with our product, and to the extent spoofers destroy that experience and degrade that experience, that hurts us as well. So the industry's been working very hard to try to address both the issue of spamming and spoofed calls. A little bit more than a week ago, the FCC issued a new notice of proposed rulemaking which would, if adopted, broaden its ability to enforce spoofing rules. It's something we look forward to working with the FCC on doing, and the carriers are all working to try to figure out how to frankly create a system that better allows for us to be able to truly authenticate caller ID information and block when people are using spoofing or spoofing and using false ID.
Thank you. Do you actually know how they do it?
In some respects, yes. It's just not necessarily an easy thing to be able to necessarily match up that, hey, that's actually Norm Needleman who's calling, as opposed to somebody else who's calling pretending to be Norm Needleman. There's a bunch of different software packages that can do it. I'll start to realize, a lot of the bad actors here, they're not even located in the United States. That's a real fundamental concern. And one of the things that the FCC's action of a week ago tries to address, too, which is to go to give it greater authority in offshore cases as well.
So was it true that one of the other members of the committee had suggested that when he went back to his bill, his phone bill, he actually saw the correct number that it came from? Or is that generally not the rule?
I would find that hard to believe that that occurred.
Well, it's a really intractable problem. It costs consumers a lot of money. And to me, it's an example of our technical abilities to do things outrunning the bad guy's abilities to hurt the public.
It's a little bit like whack-a-mole, without a doubt.
Well, thank you. You know, I'd support any efforts that we could legislatively enact that would solve that, but it sounds to me like you have a major technical hurdle there.
We do, correct.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Formica?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today. You talked about the problems of state-by-state control or trying to control this particular issue. Can you talk to us a little bit about other states who have tried this and what the results have been?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Keegan mentioned a little bit. So California and Vermont as two examples who both passed laws, and in both cases, there are court challenges. In the California case, the attorney general in California actually agreed to stay the implementation of the law there pending the final determination of an appeal of the FCC's 2017 order, which just had a hearing in front of the Court of Appeals on February 1st, and expected a decision sometime in the May to June timeframe. Though, I'll be frank with you, too, that order may take some time before it is, or that court ruling finally reads a final decision. But I think you could expect that in any state where you end up passing laws, you're going to end up having court challenges. It's just impossible for the industry to try to cope and to manage an entity that really is global in nature on a state-by-state basis. If there, I can't frankly think of anything that is more interstate in nature than the internet, frankly.
And more so each and every day.
And more so each and every day.
So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Peron?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for your testimony. I just had a quick question, a couple of quick questions. There are something like 34 states that are introducing legislation on this. I'm wondering, at a certain point, Congress acts when there's critical mass behind an issue. There was critical mass in 2013, 2014, when states were pushing for what eventually became like a light touch for net neutrality on the federal level. I'm wondering if there is maybe consideration in Congress, I don't know if there is or isn't, but accepting the idea that having a broad-based, you know, nationwide approach to this is one way to go. If there are, because there are 34 states looking at this, they're probably going to be more, whether or not, you know, the approved legislation in some states is being challenged in the courts. Where this is going, is there more of a federal response, or is there virtually none?
I think there is, there's been a lot of interest in the part of the Congress. I will characterize last year's, the action by last year's Congress, there was an attempt to pass a congressional resolution and repeal in the FCC's order. And that was really where most of the focus was. There was not frankly a lot of effort on a bipartisan basis to try to come to a legislative solution. It was, I think also you had an election year which was clouding everything that was occurring. So we're now past the election. That effort on the congressional resolution has expired because there's a timeframe under which that can occur. So that timeframe is now expired, which now leaves an avenue of legislation. So the Energy and Technology Committee, excuse me, the Energy Committee in Washington Congress had a hearing a little bit more than a week ago. At that hearing, there were three GOP proposals that were introduced that coincided with that hearing on net neutrality that would essentially codify the idea of no blocking, no throttling, all of the protections that we as an industry have agreed to, that everybody with this broad bipartisan support to do. I think you will see a piece of legislation also from the House Democrats will introduce a piece of legislation. Chairman Pallone of the committee is expected to introduce his own bill. It will differ slightly frankly from what the GOP's bills look like. Ultimately, I think they will pass something before the end of the year. I hope, that's my guess, that they'll do that. I think there is a lot of support to try to do something, both here and frankly to Commissioner Katz's comment earlier, and I did not get a chance to talk about privacy in the limited amount of time I had to speak, but I think there's also very broad bipartisan support to do something on privacy. In fact, Senator Blumenthal is leading a bipartisan effort with Senator Moran from Kansas on trying to pass a broad-ranging privacy protection that will encompass the entire internet ecosystem. So I think you'll see action on that, Representative.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Senator Austin. Allison Ellis will follow Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank you very much for holding a bill. I'm here in support of Senate Bill Number 677, an Act Concerning Providers of Telecommunication Services and Level of Technology for Stations and Upgrading of Equipment. I'm here today to support this bill, which in small towns where the small community voice channels are housed, we count on these to support our local municipalities for information, to get information out to residents, to get information out to use... Hi. ...to use students, to get, to use our local schools for information. We desperately need an upgrade in equipment, and we have tried without any real help in getting this done, in particular in Bolton, where a promise was made if equipment had been upgraded, they would, they were told that they would be able to broadcast under high def. And so I'm asking for your help here. I'd be happy to work with the committee on any of the issues, and I know you have several people here that are going to be testifying on the issue in and of itself. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions for Representative Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Senator Olson, for your testimony. I just want some clarity with regards to the scope of what it is that the bill is requesting to have done. So I get that small towns may not have the resources to upgrade the telecommunications services in their towns. Could you maybe just, you know, itemize some of the things that need to be replaced so that I would have an idea where it's going?
Well, the public access station in Bolton has already upgraded its equipment. They did that at their own cost. They're not asking for that. They're asking to be able to broadcast their shows in high definition, which is what their residents are asking for. That is being stymied. The cost has never been outlined, and even though the public access channel has, and we're verbally told that if they use their own dollars and they raise their own money to upgrade their equipment, that they would be able to then use that equipment and broadcast in high def. So if, what I believe needs to happen is an understanding on what that cost is, but a promise was made that if you do it, we will allow it, and that's not what's happened.
Okay, so the town of Bosra, as you said...
I'm sorry, that's Bolton.
Bolton, I'm sorry. The town of Bolton is already...
Bosra doesn't have its own public access channel. They use the one in Norwich.
Okay, so Bolton has already upgraded the equipment, but they are somehow being denied the ability to broadcast on broadband, on high def. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the bill is not asking for other towns to be funded in the upgrade. They're being asked to facilitate the pathway to high-definition broadcasting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you. Although I think all public access should be allowed to broadcast in high def.
Any other questions? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today. Senator, what's the rationale given for not allowing the upgrades?
They've not had a returned phone call.
So there's no reason given?
No.
As far as you know?
As far as I know, there has been no reason given.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Senator, for your testimony.
Thank you. You have a nice day.
Allison Ellis, followed by Senator Hartley.
Thank you, Chairman Arcanti, Chairman Needleman, Representative Farraro, and distinguished members of the committee, for the opportunity to testify in support of Senate Bill 847, an Act Concerning the Regulation of Voice Service Providers. I'm Allison Ellis, SVP of Regulatory Affairs for Frontier, and we provide voice, video, and broadband services here in the state of Connecticut. Aspects of the statute that Senate Bill 847 updates were first enacted when voice service in Connecticut was only available from one provider, SNET. Since the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which aimed to foster competition in the voice services market, there has been a proliferation of competitive providers available to Connecticut consumers. Today, Frontier, or also known as SNET, is no longer the only choice for voice services to Connecticut consumers, and it is not the dominant provider of voice services in the state of Connecticut. In fact, consumers in Connecticut have the choice of nearly 40 competitive providers for voice service offered via wireline, fixed wireless, satellite, and cellular technologies. This progress is reflective of the pro-competition policies implemented by PURA and the state. Frontier, more than any other provider in the state, has felt the greatest impact from this competition. In 2003, carriers like Frontier had 93% of all residential voice subscriptions. By 2016, they had only 16% nationwide. In its 2016 local competition order, the FCC found that that number was closer to 11% in Connecticut. Over half of households are wireless-only, and an even greater percent, about 95% of homes with a wired service provider, also have a mobile phone. These statistics demonstrate the vast majority of Connecticut consumers are purchasing competitive voice services from providers other than Frontier. The current statute, however, hasn't kept pace with the sea change in the competitive voice market. As it stands today, Frontier alone bears a regulatory burden related to the provision of voice service and the costs associated with regulation that none of its competitors do. And this hampers our ability to achieve economies of scale and compete on a level playing field, which is not in the interest of voice subscribers in the state. I'm aware that NECTA has filed testimony. This, NECTA is the cable providers' trade association, and their testimony opposes the change proposed by Senate Bill 847. This is not entirely unsurprising. NECTA's members are Frontier's competitors. To be clear, the NECTA's members would be wholly unimpacted by the voice provisions and changes in Senate Bill 847, and if passed, they would similarly, and it doesn't make any change to the federal protections that cable providers have, competitive providers have in the state. Senate Bill 847's goal is simply to eliminate those sections of the current law that disproportionately impact Frontier and are no longer reasonable, necessary, or in the public interest as a Senate Bill 847 has no impact on the application of federal law and its implementation by PURA in Connecticut, including no changes to provisions related to directories or telephone record information, which are concerns raised by AARP in its testimony. And in addition, Senate Bill 847 makes no change to provisions that require PURA approval in order to withdraw voice services, and that is a matter that is addressed significantly in OCC's filed testimony. Again, this concept is not part of Senate Bill 847. I'd like to emphasize that the public policy of 847 is narrow, and it seeks to just put Frontier on an equal footing with its competitors in the state of Connecticut. We've reached out to other stakeholders, including our unions, CWA, 1298, PURA, the OCC, and AARP, to discuss the goal of this provision and remain open to collaborating with all parties, and we urge the members to pass SB 847.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, thank you for your testimony. Do you know what a POTS line is?
Yes.
Who in Connecticut has POTS lines?
We have around 3,500 customers who purchase a POTS line, which is a plain-old telephone service. It's just a dial tone with no features or any additional capabilities.
Does anybody other than Frontier have POTS lines in Connecticut?
No.
So an elderly person with a phone with no features whatsoever, just dial tone, is probably on a POTS line?
Not necessarily, but they could be purchasing a POTS line.
The people who do have POTS lines are concerned that if we deregulate the POTS lines, that their prices will increase, and some of them are afraid, increase dramatically. Is there any safeguard for them to protect against that if we deregulate the POTS lines?
We have the ability today to seek a rate increase. We have not done that year over year in probably more than five years. The reality is that we have so few customers who are purchasing that service that any rate increase would drive them off of our service. As we've seen already, customers are, the vast majority of customers are choosing voice services other than POTS lines, so we have not raised our rates as a recognition that we would lose those customers, and we would rather keep them as customers than drive them away from our service.
If Senate Bill 847 passed, would you have to go to PURA for an increase in the rates for POTS lines?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Cheeseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today. So obviously, there has been a huge decline in the number of people who have those traditional telephone lines. What percentage of the change is made up of people going strictly to lines over cable, voice-over-internet protocol?
I don't have the exact percentage for you, but I can tell you it's the vast majority. So if we have 11% of the voice service market in the state of Connecticut, that means that, you know, 89% of it is being served by other providers who don't offer the POTS service that Representative Winkler was mentioning. So those would be voice-over-IP technologies. They could be wireless technologies as well.
And is it possible to get phone service from a cable provider that's not linked to the internet?
No.
So the cable providers are strictly providing voice services through voice-over-internet protocol?
Correct.
Okay. And what percentage of... And what percentage of Frontier's business is now made up of VoIP?
Uh, it's a mix throughout the state, but I would say, I could get you the exact percentages, but I, I would say that it's the majority.
Okay. And I see, looking at your proposed changes to the statutes, a lot of them have to do with the fact that, in effect, it appears the statutes haven't been examined in many years, and some of the sections are antiquated.
Correct.
Can you, if you were to get the best at the minimum level out of what you want out of this particular piece of legislation, what are the real things you want here?
What we're really concerned about is the regulatory disparity. So we operate in twenty-nine states. When, when a state has unique character, uh, unique regulatory environment, unique reporting, that drives up our costs. Those are costs that we face, that our competitors don't face, and that means that that's money that we have to direct towards regulation, administrative costs, that we can't otherwise invest in the network. So those are choices that our competitors don't have to make, and we're looking to, to equalize that so that we aren't put in this sort of Hobson's Choice of devote this money to regulatory requirements versus investment in our network.
Okay, and it, I apologize, it may be in your testimony, and how many states is Frontier currently doing business?
We operate in twenty-nine states.
Oh, all right, thank you.
And I will say that were Connecticut to, to pass Senate Bill 847, they would be following in the well-worn footsteps of other states. Forty states nationwide have, have either totally eliminated voice services regulation or vastly reduced it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Stephen Hernandez.
My name is Steve Hernan, Senator Needleman, Representative Arcanti, ranking and other distinguished members of the Energy and Technology Committee. My name is Steve Hernandez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Commissions on Women, Children, and Seniors, and Equity and Opportunity. They are nonpartisan bicameral commissions of this legislature. I'm here to testify in favor of proposed Senate Bill Number 224, an Act Concerning Lead Service Line Replacement Plans and Cost Recovery Mechanisms. On Tuesday, November thirteen, 2018, the Commissions held a Lead Safety and Awareness Forum and Day at the Capitol, where we heard of the dangers of exposure to lead. This event was cosponsored by the Department of Public Health's Lead, Radon, and Healthy Homes Program. There were about a hundred people in attendance, which really shows the, the, not only the magnitude and the breadth, but the importance of this issue. At the forum, we learned a few key facts about exposure to lead and children. Due to the rapidly developing body, a child can absorb four to five times more lead than an adult. Lead mimics iron, zinc, and calcium, which may cause anemia and slowed growth in children. There is no safe level of lead, and a blood lead level of five micrograms per deciliter averages a six-point IQ reduction, and lead poison, lead poisoning is one-hundred percent preventable. We also learned that there's a strong correlation between household incomes below poverty level and childhood lead poisoning. Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven, and Waterbury are those communities that have the highest number of households with incomes below poverty level, as well as the highest rates of childhood lead poisoning. But we know that this isn't just a cities question, it's also a rural areas question for the state of Connecticut and concern, because children in the rural areas are also being exposed to lead because of not only aging infrastructure, but aging structures as well, on, on property and in the land. Land can enter drink, lead can enter drinking water when, when service pipes that contain lead corrode, especially where the water has high acidity or low mineral content that corrodes pipes and fixtures. And the rest of my, the rest of my testimony, I submit for your, for your review. The interesting thing about lead lines is that there are ways to mitigate the leaching of lead into lead lines by, by controlling the chemistry of the water that's going through the lead lines, but there's only so much that can be done before you actually, you absolutely have to replace lead lines, at least have a short, middle, and long-term range strategy for replacing all lead lines that, in our aging homes. Many municipalities in the country have, have taken it upon themselves to switch out the lines that are in the streets, the public lines, but it is those lead lines that lead into homes that are delivering lead where they do. So this is an important, it's an important bill for all of these reasons. Of course, all these things do have a cost, and that's why it is important that we think of every way possible that we pay for these, for these replacements, whether they be through passing on some of the costs to the consumers, or having a statewide and municipal strategy for, for leveraging funds to replace those lead lines with homeowners and, and owners of rental properties. Without anything further, I, I thank you for your work in this, in this field, and I, and I am open to any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Ferraro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your testimony, and certainly, uh, lead poisoning and, and health of children and elderly is, or anybody for that matter, is extremely important. Do you happen to know if there is currently a fiscal note, what that fiscal note would be?
I don't, actually. I don't know whether there is currently a fiscal note. I know that this can be, replacing lead service lines from the street to the house can be very expensive, and, you know, for some municipalities in other states, this has been done incrementally in concert with a local water authority. Sometimes what, what's done is that the lead service replacement line is, is replaced at turnover. That's when a house is either sold or substantially rehabilitated. So there are different strategies, not only of, of, of taking some of that cost and putting it into the equity of the house, because this is an improvement on the house, or other strategies for this, but I can only imagine that it, that it is a high cost. But again, no lead exposure is safe exposure, and unfortunately, because of lead in paint, lead in the soil from, from years and years of contamination, there, there are enough opportunities out there for kids to be exposed to lead, and this is one way where we can take this head-on.
And do you know what, what material is being substituted for the lead? Is it PC, PCV, whatever it is? Is that what it is, plastic piping?
That's one, right, yep.
Okay. And, and are other states doing, currently doing some incentive-type programs, or?
They are. So through, um, my, my most recent memory is in the state of, or the city-state of DC, where I oversaw the committee that had jurisdiction over these issues. And what we were doing is, again, we worked directly with the city and the company to have incentive programs. We had, um, we had a fund that was created to incentivize homeowners to, to leverage homeowner resources to do this themselves. Unfortunately, the first folks who can respond to this are really folks who have resources. But, but again, this has to be an inside-outside strategy. I think we should leverage municipal and state funds in order to do this, because ultimately, it does in near the benefit of every resident.
Is it possible for you to provide the committee with any of this information regarding...
We sure will, so...
Current incentive programs?
We have, uh, we have three interns who are serving us from Yale for this session. They are from the graduate students in the, in the public health, from the public health school, and I will have one of them do that research and provide some examples of different ways that you can resource this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from committee members? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today, Stephen. So let me get this straight. The problem with the lead lies not only in the pipes bringing the municipal water to the house, but also in the house itself, in fixtures, in sodders, in the joints?
Yep. So it's a couple of things. There, there are three levels of piping that happens when you deliver water from the municipal authority, or whatever authority is delivering water into the house. There's the lead lines that are out in the streets. Those are the public lead lines. The lead lines that lead to the house, and then, of course, whatever infrastructure you have in the house. Most of our houses have been modernized so that those old lead structures that were inside the house have been replaced over time, most. Most of our, our towns have remediated their lead, their lead, their public lead line problem by exchanging lead lines out in the street. What some communities even do is that they control the chemistry very carefully, so that you, you minimize the risk of having lead moving into a structure. There's also some communities which mitigate lead by running the tap. Believe it or not, that actually does work, because it does flush out the system. That, it's that middle service line, which is the lead line that runs from the street to the house, that is the culprit, generally, the most expensive to switch out, because it, because the cost of that would need to be borne by the homeowner. And, and it can be extensive work, depending on the grading of the house, depending on the distance from the service line that's in the street. So that's where the bulk of the cost is.
So the, these are lines that are actually made out of lead?
Uh, they were originally. They, they more recently may have the, the joints, as you said, the, the soldering that holds them together. I, that's generally what's, the more recent infrastructure, that's what, that's what it's composed of. The older lead lines were almost completely made out of lead, or at least had lead in the pipe itself.
Okay, as, as a component of the...
That's right, of the chemistry of the pipe.
And speaking as, as one who doesn't have municipal water but does have wells, is there any move to address those? I mean, there are a significant number of households in the state who are not supplied with water from the system, but may have similar problems simply because of the age of their pipes, et cetera?
The recommendation, that is not only a state recommendation, but a national recommendation, is that you have your water tested for lead in your pipes, in your wells, every year. We do, we do that in our own home, and, and every year, depending on where you are, you may have more or less leaching onto, into the lead wells of your property, so it is important to test your, your leads every year. There are, there are private organizations and, and other organizations where you can mail in a sample of your water and, and have those results returned rather quickly, and then there are ways of, of mitigating some of the hazards from that lead, including filters and, and other means.
Do we have any idea of the number of households this affects?
We don't. I'll, as part of our research for you that we'll bring, that we'll bring and, and submit as, as part of our testimony, we'll be looking into not only what other municipalities are doing for remediation of costs, but also how many households this would impact in the state of Connecticut. I would imagine, given the state of Connecticut's age as a state, and just the extraordinary amount of infrastructure in the state, I would imagine that it's pretty high.
Thank you. I'd be very interested in looking at that, those details.
We sure will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Stephen, for testifying today. I also want to note that, that there's a bill before the Public Health Committee requiring the, these quote-unquote "safe" level of lead to be reduced to five micrograms from a much higher number, and there, and I appreciate all the data that's been supplied indicating the increased dangers when we, when you get up to ten or even twenty micrograms, as, as currently has been the standard in the state of Connecticut. So thank you for that advocacy as well. You note in your testimony that the biggest culprit these days may be lead solder that's used really to join copper or other kinds of metal pipes. Are you aware, are there still plumbers out there using lead solder in any fashion?
To my, to my knowledge, and based on information and our research, no. That is, it's no longer a practice for lead solder to be used through our, through our information. Now, we do know that there are, that there are pipes that have lead solder, that are pipes that are joined by lead solder that are still out. There are ways of remediating that by, by either flushing or by, you know, controlling the chemistry in the water, but to our information, there aren't. Now, you know, that's our information based on the regulated industry.
So really, we're just working to address a decade or two in which that was common practice, and that, conceivably, even though it might be widespread, it might be manageable for us to address this directly?
That's what our research will provide for you once we, once we have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Needleman?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to the forefront. This is a big problem that cuts across the whole state. Recently, I had to sit with a new homeowner who had little children and the water company and try to mediate between the two of them, because their line coming in from the street was lead, and they had confirmed relatively high levels of lead in the house. And in order to purify their water to a safe drinking level, they had a reverse osmosis system.
Right.
And they were using an enormous amount of water. So the water company seemed to be making it on either end. And ultimately, we had to, we, we found a point at which the, the utility paid for the changeover of the homeowner's service, and then that point at which the homeowner picked up. So we did it, like, to the end of the sidewalk. But it's a, it's a gigantic cost, and, and the price to get lead out is very high, and you're right. It's the basic pipes, it's the service to the house, and then what goes on in the house. And, and I think we know the problems that have occurred when water problems were not addressed properly, and I think that we should try to at least have a plan.
Right.
I suspect, being that we are a colonial state, there are many, many pipes out there in all neighborhoods that have lead in them, whether it's lead solder or lead pipes, but our children's future is at risk with this, and, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think it does bear repeating that no amount of lead exposure is safe for kids, but, you know, we do appreciate the efforts to lower the, the impact of, or at least the, the, the impact from ten to five. But what's important is that, you know, lead, lead-free and lead-safe are two terms that are used. Lead, lead-safe is not necessarily lead-free, but it's controlled to the point where it's not leaching any, or only negligible amounts into any, whether, whether it be water or the soil. And I think that where we can, we should strive toward lead-free, I'm sorry, lead-safe alternatives, but where we must, we must also strive for lead, lead-free, where, especially in water where the impacts are so immediately absorbed in the body.
Any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right. Russell Hansen from NECTA, followed by Maureen Westbrook.
Good morning, Chairman Needleman, Chairman Arcanti, Vice Chairman Fonfara, Vice Chairman Ali Brennan, Ranking Member Formica, Ranking Member Ferraro, and distinguished members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to testify on behalf of the New England Cable Telecommunications Association on Senate Bill Six. My name is Russ Hanser. I'm a partner at Wilkinson Barker Nauer, where I practice communications law. I've worked on communications issues, including net neutrality and privacy, for about twenty years, both at law firms and at the FCC. My written testimony addresses SB Six in detail. I'll just highlight a couple of points here, and be happy to take your questions. First, broadband ISPs are fully committed to net neutrality. They've made legally enforceable public commitments not to block, throttle, or discriminate against any lawful content or device, and they're actively pursuing, as you heard, strong federal legislation to codify core net neutrality protections. Second, there's no gap that state law needs to fill. The FCC currently requires ISPs to inform consumers of their net neutrality commitments, and as former FTC Chairman John Leibowitz testified here last year, the FTC has broad authority to enforce ISP's commitments and to prevent anti-competitive conduct. In addition, state attorneys general have significant enforcement powers. Third, SB Six's net neutrality measures would be unwise and unlawful. Under Democrats and Republicans alike, the FCC has repeatedly found that the internet is quintessentially interstate, and that federal law prohibits state and local net neutrality laws. Thus, when California, as you heard, enacted a net neutrality law of its own and was sued in federal court, it had to agree not to enforce the law unless and until the DC Circuit overturned the preemption ruling in the currently pending appeal of the FCC's Restoring Internet Freedom Order. Even then, conflict preemption and/or the Commerce Clause would likely prevent enforcement. Connecticut, which is a party to the pending challenge to the FCC's order, can and should avoid this outcome by waiting for the court to rule before moving to adopt an unenforceable law. Turning to privacy, fourth, there's also no gap there that needs to be filled by state law. The FTC has both the authority and the expertise to protect consumer privacy. It has brought more than five hundred privacy-related enforcement actions, including one hundred and one relating to the internet, as found by GAO last week or so. Notably, of those, a hundred and one, only one privacy action that the FTC brought involved an ISP. Broadband ISPs applaud the growing consensus regarding the need for federal legislation, but state laws on this topic would harm consumers and businesses alike. Fifth, SBC's privacy protections would have very serious unintended consequences. The bill goes well beyond the frameworks identified and adopted, developed by President Obama's FTC and FCC, by Europe's GDPR, and by the California Consumer Privacy Act. Indeed, because it fails to differentiate between sensitive and non-sensitive information, and because, unlike all the other laws, it fails to recognize common use, commonplace uses of data... uses of data that should be exempt from inflexible opt-in requirements, SB 6 would devastate the Internet economy. It would impair even the most basic network functions and commercial interactions without any benefit. Sixth and finally, SB 6's privacy provisions are also unlawful because they convict, excuse me, conflict with longstanding federal policies regarding privacy. In addition, because it imposes discriminatory speaker-based restrictions solely on ISP's expression and because it applies to all consumers nationwide, SBC also violates the U.S. Constitution, particularly the First Amendment and the Norman Commerce Clause. I look forward to answering any questions you might have, and thank you again.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Ferraro?
Thank you, Russell, for your testimony, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask the question. You have some lengthy testimony here, and in your testimony, you mentioned that SB 6 could impair basic network operations and commercial transactions. Do you care to elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Sure, thank you. Let me take one example from each. So let's talk first about the network operations. When I sit down at my computer on the web and I type www.cnn.com, the computer, the Internet needs to translate that into an IP address. It needs to know where to go to get that information in transit to me. So it goes, it performs something that's known as a DNS lookup. It goes to centralized databases that essentially are like a big phone book. CNN.com, oh, that's IP address such and such. But what the ISP needs to do is give my IP address to that, to CNN's IP address, to facilitate communication between the two. So CNN gets my IP address and then it ultimately sends me the the content. Under the bill, an IP address is personal information, and under the bill, every piece of personal information that is shared can only be shared after the customer has affirmatively opted into such sharing. The ISP needs to provide the name of the entity with which the information is being shared and more details about why it's being shared and so on. So I could not say as a blanket matter under this bill, when I want to go to CNN.com, I really want to go to CNN.com and you should give them my IP address. For each transaction, I they'd have to get a pop-up saying, are you sure? We you can share, we can share this information? Yes. Then I shift over to MSNBC.com, same thing. So it really brings the Internet to its knees. You know, it sounds like hyperbole to say that, you know, wrecks the Internet ecosystem. As written, as at least as I read the bill, that really is what it does. So that's on the network operations side. On the commercial side, there's sort of a similar, slightly different but similar thing going on. So I go to my phone provider, my ISP, and I say, I'd like to buy the newest iPhone from you, something many of us do every two years or so. Well, what does the phone company need to do, the ISP need to do? It needs to go and it needs to, you know, have some relationship with Apple maybe and it gets the device, or maybe it has a vendor that it uses to send me the device and to and to work out the whole shipping process and to get all the pieces that I've ordered together. All of that involves sharing my address and my name. Now, one might think presumably if I'm going online to order a device from my ISP, I want them to share that information with their vendor so that I get the material. But again, as the bill reads, for each one of those transactions, for each vendor, for each other entity with which the the ISP would need to share the information, it would need, again, to get my affirmative consent. These are very basic transactions that kind of run the Internet economy and in the earlier example, run the Internet itself, and they are they are going to be severely disrupted if the bill isn't acted as as is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hanson. That's very interesting. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from committee members? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today. It's my recollection in last year's testimony, we had an expert come before us to talk about how adopting such regulations would preclude things like autonomous vehicles because you obviously, if you're driving down, you want the signals being sent from your car to have priority over other things, otherwise we're never going to get there. Can you just expand on the other ill effects this might create in terms of technological changes we want to see?
Sure.
But might be adversely affected by this legislation?
Sure, thank you. So I guess I want to first just underscore that the broadband ISPs generally are supporting and are actively fighting for federal rules on no blocking, no unfair discrimination, and so on. But the the worry, especially with respect to state-by-state regulation, is that the worry is that the devil's in the details and how are these rules enforced? The federal regimes that have been in place over the years have always had some kind of exception for what have been known as specialized services, or sometimes they're known as managed services, sometimes they're known as non-broadband Internet access service services, data services. And then they've always, sorry, they have not always, but I think usually should have reasonableness requirements. And so the question becomes, how do we make sure that the driverless cars and the implantable pacemakers that, you know, we want to see, we want to, you know, we want folks who need those kind of services to be able to have up-to-the-minute communication, up to the up to the millisecond, communication between their implanted devices and the network that's monitoring? And if those services can't prioritize, can't be prioritized over, you know, my daughter's Instagram posts, which are wonderful but not quite as time-sensitive, that's going to be very problematic. And when we have a state-by-state Patrick approach, different states are likely to adopt different understandings, and that puts ISPs and these kind of service providers and entrepreneurs who are looking to build those services in a very difficult position, especially when the laws are written sort of as blunt-force tools that don't kind of get at those nuances that you discussed.
And I think it's, I tried to touch on, and you have touched on, we have no idea of what the coming uses may be, that we may inadvertently harm. I mean, if the whole point of what we're doing up here is to do everything in our power to encourage business growth, to encourage that sort of new development, new high-tech entrepreneurship, I would have thought we don't want to do anything that might make it less likely that it's going to happen and that the people who are designing it will seek other states in which to do it. And my final question, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned throttling. And again, you said the devil's in the details. It appears there is no technical term. Throttling is the reduction of services to X point. Again, can you expand on that for me, please?
So the term throttling, it's you've really zeroed in on an interesting discussion. So the term throttling is used by some in a very, I'd say, absolutist way. Any change in the speed, any reduction in the speed of a service. The FCC's 2015 order under Chairman Wheeler, President Obama's second chairman, used the word throttling but defined it as impairing or degrading service. And I think that's a very important sort of, that's very important language because there can be reduction of speed that is not impairing and degrading service. I'm here on behalf of cable providers today, but if wireless providers would say, you know, many wireless providers who have customers who watch watch videos on small devices, there's no way to tell the difference between the highest-speed version of a video and a slightly lower-speed version of the video, but it can open up the network to a lot more uses if we reduce the speed slightly. That is not throttling in the in the sense of impairing or degrading, but certain certainly folks with absolutist view of the term might say, well, any any action you take on that data stream, no matter how helpful it is, no matter how much consumers are informed of it or content to it, is unacceptable. So, you know, we, there's certainly consensus around ending, you know, unfair discrimination and ending this activity that impairs or degrades, I should say, I say ending, but it's not actually happened in the wild, but preventing impairment or degradation. That doesn't mean that wireless provider, that all ISPs frankly shouldn't be able to make slight modifications to make the network work better for all the customers if it's not going to impair a great service.
All right. Thank you for your testimony, and I I share your desire as well of the other people who testified today that this is handled at a federal level and not on a state-by-state basis. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Representative Davis?
Thank you, and thank you for being here today over here. Thank you for your testimony and reading through the bill and listening to the testimony of some of the other people that were here today and reading through some of the other testimonies available online, the wording of this bill as written, would this prohibit Internet service providers from offering different tiers of Internet service to their to their customers? For instance, if I was someone who just wanted to go on the Internet to read the news, as in your example, CNN and MSNBC.com, and not really do any gaming, not stream any movies, anything like that, and I wanted to pay a reduced price for that service and have potentially slower speeds, but that one that ultimately would not impact my viewership of these websites, generally speaking? And then if I was somebody who only wanted to go gaming and do things at very high speeds and pay ultra-premium for that service, would this bill prohibit your ability as a consumer to have those types of options?
So so it's a great question, and and it's a question that's hard to answer, and I'll explain why. So in 2010 and 2015, the FCC adopted two different net neutrality orders. In both cases, it said some version of the following. We're not telling providers that they can't offer different service tiers. You can offer a lower number of megabytes or gigabytes after which someone loses service. You can offer a certain number of gigabytes after which the consumer gets a lower speed. You can offer different speed tiers. That's okay. Some net neutrality advocates said that's not right. You know, their vision of net neutrality was nobody should be able to get differentiated service, it should all be just service. I would not say all net neutrality, all folks who, I think it's a small proportion of people who who take that position. I don't read that in the bill's language here, but I do know that this bill replicates what was known in the 2015 FCC order as the general conduct standard, which essentially says regulatory authority has the power to look at a regime and decide that it's unfairly impair, not impairing or degrading, but unfairly interfering with customers' use. What does it mean to unfairly impair, sorry, interfere with customers' use? Well, to me and perhaps to you, a set of regime, a set of offerings and plans that allow individuals to buy the plan most suited to them is not interfering. In fact, it's facilitating their better use. But I can tell you, there are some people who don't view it that way and who would say even the provision by an ISP of different tiers, you know, you know, the gamer tier, the mid, the, you know, middle-aged dad tier, the grandmother tier, right? There, that some folks say that even offering those tiers is discriminatory and should be unlawful. So could someone read this bill to preclude that and argue that it does? Yes. But I would not say it's in there in the language on its base.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I mean, from my reading of subsection E, lines 58 through 62, it explicitly says that you shall not impair or degrade lawful Internet traffic on the basis of Internet content, application, or service, or use unharmed full device subject to reasonable network management. And the way I'm reading that means that you can't impair the traffic or the access to that broadband speed for anybody. So conversely, the way that potentially could be interpreted is that every single customer would have to have the hot, to have access or not just have access, but be provided the highest possible speed, which, as you know, and as anybody who knows this, how it works, is that would then thus lower everybody's speed to a baseline speed rather than giving the opportunity for people to have these different levels. Because as Representative Cheeseman mentioned, you would have autonomous vehicles that I could only pray would have the ability to have the highest level of Internet capability as possible compared to, say, my smartphone, which, at the end of the day, I can live with it being delayed a millisecond or two. And the way that I read that this bill is drafted now, and I think it's similar to previous language in the past, ultimately, I would have to have on my smartphone the same exact speed that a server provider for Amazon Web Services would have to have in order to process significant amounts of data throughout the Internet. Is that potentially a correct interpretation of it?
I think there are some who would take the bill in that direction for sure. And to put it in a very plain term, so later this afternoon, I will go to Bradley Airport and I will get on a plane, and when Group 6 comes around, I will walk past all the people who got in first class and I will sit in coach. That's because I, for me, the value of buying the coach ticket, for me and my clients, the the value of buying the coach ticket was the right value. But it would be unfortunate if, I guess it was American Airlines said, no, 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 the law says we only can offer everyone first class. You know, we differentiate in all kinds of businesses, and the gamer, well, the grandma or even the middle-aged dad guy doesn't need to buy the same connectivity that the gamer does. And, you know, the economy works well when folks can ascertain what the cost benefit is for the particular purchase and by the the service that suits them best.
And if I'm if I'm reading it as well, the next subsection F, which is 63, line 63 to 65, says that shall not engage in any paid prioritization, which is exactly what I think you're talking about, which is if I wanted to pay for priority on a broadband line because of my business requires it, or I operate an autonomous vehicle service or something, I operate Bradley Airport and I need to have the highest-speed Internet in order to fly the planes correctly, I would no longer be able to pay for that prioritization. And the grandma who's playing, you know, online games at home would have the same level of Internet speed that that those other providers would have. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes. So as I mentioned, in the in the FCC, when the FCC had affirmatively, had affirmative blocking, throttling, and so on rules, it in both the 2010 order and 2015 order had a broad category of exceptions for managed or specialized or non-broadband Internet access data services. That's not in the bill. So that that would have helped make, that helped make clear that those things were permissible under those regimes, and I think you're right, that that's not, that's not present here.
So it's quite clear that there is a existing structure that would provide for these types of different prioritizations that ultimately are fair to most people, generally speaking. But this bill would kind of take it to the other extreme and say that you can't do any of that, that everybody's got to be equal at all times, no matter what they're trying to accomplish while on the Internet, correct?
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Much appreciated. Maureen Westbrook?
It is afternoon now to the chairs, the ranking members, and members of the Energy and Technology Committee here today. My name is Maureen Westbrook, and I'm here on behalf of Connecticut Water Company to speak regarding two of the water bills before you today. I provide written testimony on proposed Bill 5014, an act requiring water companies to provide notice regarding mergers, acquisitions, or changes to their corporate structure, and to Senate Bill 224 regarding the lead service lines that was discussed earlier. I'm familiar with the others and support the testimony of Connecticut Water Works Association provided on those, but would like to focus on these two first. Regarding the notice of the mergers, I can certainly appreciate the interest in providing the transparency in water company mergers and acquisitions and fully support communications to state and local elected officials so they are aware of such transactions. We're prepared to work with the sponsor of the bill and the committee to try to meet the intent of the proposal with a clearly defined process. We've included in our testimony some suggestions, particularly regarding the timing of any such notice. We're concerned as drafted, there may be confusion or potential legal and SEC implications if the required actions are timed relative to, quote, "the scheduled merger, acquisition, or change to a corporate structure." It could be interpreted to mean anything from the time of the original announcement right up into the closing. Having recently been involved in one of these transactions and knowing that my lawyers were very attentive to when and what I said, I think we'd all be better served and the customers would be better off if that was tied a little more specifically. Like the OCC testified, we suggest that an appropriate triggering mechanism would be the filing of an application with PURA under Section 1647 of the statutes. That PURA approval is required before we could proceed, and that process takes about, is 120-day from start to close with the authority there. So that notice requirement, we could advise the people, they'd have ample opportunity to provide the public comments either at the hearings or in writing to PURA, and that would all be considered by PURA before they rendered a decision on the application. So that would seem to be an effective, practical approach to deal with that issue. And we could provide details in that notice for them on when and how to comment and things like that. And on SB 224, certainly we share the opinions earlier about the importance of dealing with lead service lines, and the earlier speaker was very correct. And the part that we struggle with is the customer portion of that lead service line. Even if we replace the portion that comes in from the road to the how, to the curb stop, there's a portion owned by the customer that's difficult for them to find the resources to replace. So we're really eager to continue the conversation. I know PURA and OCC have some concerns about, you know, how big is this problem and how do we define it? And I think that's, those are legitimate questions, but we'd just like an opportunity to move this forward, to continue the dialogue, find a way, whether it's some cost sharing by those customers, some incentive, whatever it is, so that we can do our best to get those out of the system as soon as we, as practical. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Maureen, for testifying today. I really appreciate your comments. I think there's a solution that we can create that will be fair, that will create appropriate protocols at PURA to get some of these things that we're concerned about addressed. And I'm very hopeful that you and others will remain involved and talk to OCC and PURA so we can come up with something that works for the state of Connecticut and protects our citizens' health interests. So thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Any other questions? Representative Ackert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good to see you, Maureen. So going through the legislation that we passed last year regarding Healthy Homes Fund. So the Healthy Home Funds has, is the surcharge that is on the insurance, you know, home insurance, 85% of which insurance, 85% of which goes to crumbling foundations. The remainder goes to the Healthy Homes Fund. One of the key focuses on the Healthy Home Funds is lead abatement, including pipelines. So if we're talking, you know, I'm not going to do the quick math, but depending on if it's $10 million that we bring in, a million dollars goes to, I believe, one of the neighborhoods that has the sinking houses. I mean, we've got a couple of issues going on out there. But the rest could be used, and maybe that's something that we should look at in terms of when you're going to go do maybe a neighborhood or something like that with new lines. Maybe there's another route, or maybe in combination, but maybe that a portion of this can be used for that, that lead service to the home. Because it spells out it's specifically what it's designed for, whether it's lead abatement in a home, windows, paint, whatever, but also water lines.
Right.
So I think that's a fund that we might want to review from what we passed last year. So just keep that, if that's something that you're, that PURA, however we want to do that, you know, that may help in that manner along with whatever maybe is fees or charges or something like that, but.
Yeah, I was not familiar with that, and that seems like a great tool. And that might also bridge with some of the municipal utilities that aren't PURA-regulated, how they could approach this as well, so.
Yeah, and I think that's the design. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Senator Hartley?
And Chairman Arcti and Chairman Needleman, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon. For the record, my name is Joan Hartley. I am the senator from the 15th District representing Waterbury, Nagatuck, and Middlebury. And I appear before you this afternoon in support of SB 676, an act concerning the Connecticut Siting Council hiring a special inspector for the construction of any merchant electrical generating facility. I am appearing with Raymond Petrarri, who is, been designated by the First Selectman in the town of Middlebury with regard to the subject of the construction of the power plant on the Middlebury-Oxford line, that is, the CPV-Tewantik Power Plant. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity to, raising the bill and to have this discussion with you today. In the aftermath of the 2010 tragic explosion at the Clean Energy Power Plant in Middletown, I think we probably all remember that there, with the fatal death of six of the employees, and I think it was something like an additional 30 who were seriously injured that year in 2010, the Thomas Commission was impaneled. And they issued their report the following year in 2011. Of the number of recommendations that the Thomas Commission offered after they had done their review and due diligence on the situation was specifically that there should be hired a special inspector for the purposes of overseeing the construction of such power plant, and that the special inspector should be compensated or should be paid by the developer. The purpose of the underlying bill before you, 676, is to ensure the independence of such an overs, the oversight of the special inspector by requiring that the special inspector be hired by the Siting Council, not changing the remuneration model, that is, that they should, of course, still continue to be paid by the developer. This change would be very much in accordance with what the objective was of the Thomas Commission with regard to this particular provision, and that was to provide an unfettered, an impartial oversight by a special inspector during the construction phase. And I would like, with your indulgence, to share my time and the mic, Chairman, and members with Mr. Petrazio from the town of Middlebury.
Thank you, Senator Hartley. Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the committee. I had originally, I didn't realize I had three minutes. I had originally planned to read the submission that I provided to you, the testimony, but I'll try to cut through it. It's a, it's somewhat a technical subject to begin with, and I just wanted the committee to have as much background knowledge in order to make your decision that would impact that decision. And a very important part of this is the fact that the National Fire Protection Association, on the heels of the Middletown tragedy, developed NFPA 56 as a standard for fire and explosion prevention during the cleaning and purging flammable gas piping systems. It was formally adopted by the state of Connecticut in the 2016 legislature approval session. CPV, which was the developer at the Tewantik site in Oxford, Connecticut, was mandated by law to comply with this important safety standard without exception. Following our direct excerpts from NFPA 56, under 4.5, "Safety validation. A written safety validation shall be performed for cleaning and purging procedures." 4.5.1, "The safety validation shall be conducted independently after the procedure has been written and shall evaluate hazards, errors, and malfunctions related to each step in the procedure to validate the measures prescribed in the procedure or make recommendations for additional hazard mitigation measures if necessary." 4.7, "Documentation. Cleaning and purging procedures shall be documented and available at the job site." 4.7.3, "The safety validation and cleaning and purging procedures shall be retained for at least two years following completion of the activity." 7.1.1, "Where gas piping containing air is placed in operation. The air in the piping first shall be displaced with an inert gas, which then shall be displaced with the flammable gas in accordance with section 7.2." I, I would like to bring and make very clear to the committee that that step, that last step, is every bit as important as the cleaning of the pipe, which they use at Tewantik, they use compressed air to clean the pipe. But having that air in the pipe and have flammable gas come in contact with that air directly could cause an explosive mixture within the pipe. It's a very serious matter. CPV submitted in accordance with its certificate a procedure for cleaning the gas piping. I noticed it did not contain any reference to the purging of the piping with the inert gas, a very important procedure as mandated by NFPA 56 and law. I sent a Freedom of Information request to the council asking to review the records of the special inspector. The council advised me that it had no such records in its possession. It never did have, and further, that the certificate did not require CPV to copy the council on those records. The council also took the position that the records I saw were not public records. The council gave me the contact information of the special inspector so I could go directly to him with my request. I was advised by the special inspector that he was a private contractor and not subject to the FOIA, and therefore denied my access to the records. I went back to the council and asked it to obtain the copies from the special inspector so I could review them, which was denied. There is no mention in the entire council record for the CPV-Tewantik LLC plant, council docket number 192B, of purging the gas piping or inert gas. There are no records of gas line purging in any of the several FOIA requests to the Oxford Fire Marshal and the Oxford Building Official. Also, those local officials have no records or permits or permit inspections for any of the CPV gas piping construction. The Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, response to my FOIA request, addressed it, I'm sorry, addressed to it that it has no such records, and it has stated it has no jurisdiction over the CPV natural gas piping. According to the records and the absence of records, not only was there no agency oversight, again, with respect to the flammable gas piping, but we must ask ourselves, where the codes and standards followed? Was the gas piping properly purged using an inert gas in accordance with NFPA 56? Were the records kept? On what basis was the certificate of occupancy granted to CPV by the town of Oxford? On what basis did the council deem the plant safe and allow it to go online? Who performed the gas piping pressure tests and who witnessed them? No one seems to have any documentation except CPV, who is withholding it from the public. I have looked into the policies of some other states with respect to special inspectors and received the following information. California, the California Energy Commission is the counterpart to the Connecticut Siting Council. The California Energy Commission member, Chris Davis, advised me that the council hires the special inspector, I'm sorry, that the, in California, the California Energy Commission hires the special inspector, who answers directly to the California Energy Commission. All costs incurred by, for the special inspector are paid by the developer. All records, including those of the special inspector, are public records.
Excuse me, Rick, could you, could you summarize your statements?
I'd just like to make the comment with regard to the California information that...
What's the model? California, what's the model?
Yes, California has many more instances of gas-fired power plants than Connecticut. It was, they'd been doing it for many years before combined-cycle plants became the norm in the Northeast. And it, it didn't happen prior to that because they couldn't get the gas to the Northeast area. So it would be my recommendation that Connecticut follow the California successful policy that has been in place since 1988. And that is to have the counterpart to the, to the California Energy Commission, which is the Siting Council. The Siting Council hire the special inspector, so the special inspector would have to answer to the Siting Council, not to the developer, which is kind of the fox guarding the henhouse. Hopefully, with the countrywide, countrywide efforts being made to replace fossil fuel generating plants with renewables, these baseload fossil fuel burning plants will soon be a thing of the past. In the meantime, however, we must assure two things. First and foremost, there will never be another event in Connecticut such as took place at Clean Energy. Second, that the public's right to know, particularly with respect to matters of public safety, is upheld and not diminished in any way. If the committee has any questions, and I'd be happy to give further testimony.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Rick, for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Ackert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and if they'll indulge me, thank you for your testimony. I'm just at a loss, being in construction, that there's little oversight from what you had mentioned on such an elaborate system. And I'm completely confused on that with Connecticut OSHA, CONOSHA, and federal OSHA involved and an OSHA standard that, whether it's, whether it's building, but it just seems to be that we're, not that I'm in against or support of the legislation right now on adding inspector, because it seems like we have more inspectors than we know what to do with, except look at a gas plant or a, so how is, where's the missing link that I'm, that I'm not catching on this? Is it not, I mean, we have a state department administration, a DAS, what we call it, that has state inspectors, OSHA, I mean, so we're a very regulated state. What are, what am I missing?
I share your sentiments 100%, Representative. Okay? There is, there has been no government oversight with regard to the gas piping at this plant according to the FOIA records from everyone, including PURA, the local fire marshal, the local building inspector, the state building inspector, the state fire marshal, OSHA, and several others are off the top of my, the committee that, with the Department of Consumer Protection, I believe it is, the committee that works with the, the Connecticut State Building Code updates, I FOIA them also. And no one, they don't, not only are there no records on the gas piping, there's no record, they have no records with regard to this plant.
And if I might, Representative Ackert, I think based upon Mr. Petrazio's involvement on this particular construction site, I became interested in this. And going back once again, as we referenced at the start of the conversation, the Thomas Commission, after that tragic event, spent a great deal of time parsing out what had happened and where there were the shortfalls. And so at a first blush, this is a, the special inspector position is one that is hired and paid for by the developer. So aside from OSHA and all of the other regulatory agencies, this was specific to the results and the recommendations of the Thomas Commission. And so looking to see best practices, it became evident that, for example, in California, the purpose of the special inspector is to be that impartial, independent oversight on every, you know, event of the construction. And it, right now, the way it is structured is that position is hired and paid for by the developer. So in addition to the frustration of not being able to monitor and track what the oversight and the reporting of that oversight was, it seemed at first blush that to have the special inspector be hired by an independent agency, in this instance, the oversight of the Siting Council. So that's kind of the genesis of this. There was also, I should mention, another piece that was proposed in this legislation, and I think in the drafting, that it did not, it was not recorded, and that was to make available the records so that at reasonable intervals, a town, in this instance, Mr. Petrazio, who is representing the town of Middlebury by virtue of the First Selectman's office, would be able to track and follow what the reports were of the special inspector. Instead, it's just kind of been, you know, a firewall figuratively. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. And I'm still, I had, beyond a loss as to how a project of this magnitude, is it a, is it a federal project? I thought it was a, is it a federal mandate, not mandate, excuse me, not, is it a federal oversight? Is it?
It was a private developer, yeah, in developing the site. It was on the Oxford-Middlebury line. But once again, you know, this particular proposal is to talk about the, you know, the recruiting, the hiring of the special inspector, to make sure that that function, that job, is truly doing what we tasked it to do. And by virtue of having it, you know, be hired and recruited from the Siting Council, we feel that we can correct, I think, something that probably was unintentional.
Thank you. I'll continue to listen to the di-
I'll continue to listen to the dialogue on this and I'm looking forward to contacting Department Administrative Services on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions for Senator Hartley? Senator Needleman?
May I add one thing, sir?
Okay.
To the representative's question, the Towantec matter, CPV Towantec LLC in Oxford, Connecticut, is now in the hands of the state building inspector and the state fire marshal, and they're investigating what I submitted to you today.
Thank you. That's Department Administrative Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Hartley. Thank you for coming and testifying on this. I've managed municipal projects where there was a requirement for a special inspector, and it can be very costly. So I have a quick question. The definition, maybe you can clarify, merchant electrical generating facility?
That is the definition used by the federal government with regard to private power plants.
So it's like onsite?
That's the title given to them by the feds, merchant power plant.
So if I wanted to build a power plant to run my factory, this would be, so would fuel cells be part of that?
With regard, with the Connecticut Siting Council, I've forgotten exactly where the megawatt amount comes in, but it's very, I think it's 20 megawatts and smaller is not under the jurisdiction of the Siting Council. I think it's 20 megawatts and up, under the direct jurisdiction of the Siting Council.
So this was a private power plant?
Totally private power plant, yeah. And when the applications go in for these plants, because they are private, the initial approval has to come from the FERC? Okay?
So I would have assumed, like the representative, that minimally the building official and fire marshal and the municipality would have had some oversight over the project. And I'm surprised to hear that there are no records.
The public, the local building inspector and the local fire marshal both enjoy complete jurisdiction over that power plant by law. They also have, at their request, they can go to the state building inspector and state fire marshal for their assistance in interpretation, things like that. But they, it is my understanding that they have the overriding jurisdiction to do the inspections and make sure the construction is in accordance with the Connecticut State Building Code, which the CPV is not exempted from.
And just to point a clarification for me, the plant in Middletown that exploded was not a private, it was for the public good, it was for?
No, it was private. Clean Energy was also private. There was also a general permit taken out in the town, Middletown, for that plant, ironically enough, but not Knoxville.
Okay, thank you.
Right welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Tim Wilkerson from NECA, followed by Andrew Kingman?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Ranking Members, esteemed members of the committee. My name is Tim Wilkerson. I am Vice President and General Counsel of the New England Cable and Telecom Association. At the outset, I would say I strenuously support the comments by CTIA, AT&amp;T, and obviously Mr. Hanser, who also represents NECA, and I will do my best not to repeat any of the comments that were previously made. Here in Connecticut, NECA represents four cable broadband companies, Atlantic Broadband, Charter Communications, which is headquartered in Stanford, Comcast, which has a regional headquarters in Berlin, and also NBC Sports, which is headquartered in Stanford as well, and Cox Communications. Over the past seven years, our companies alone have invested over $2 billion in Connecticut. And as an industry, in 2019, we expect to employ over 6,000 residents of Connecticut. The level of investment and innovation that's taken place over the past, I'd say, two decades in the state are pretty incredible. And I'd say that on the residential side and on the business side, there is not a single person, almost a single person in the state that doesn't have broadband service or have the capability of buying broadband service that meets and far exceeds any capability they may have, both in their home or in their business. And I think part of that has created what we've seen, the success in aerospace, in life sciences, and in financial services here in Connecticut. And there's one reason, one of the direct correlations between that investment, level of investment that's been made here and what the residents of Connecticut enjoy today is the uniform bipartisan framework of regulation that was created in 1996 and has been followed by you and your predecessors in Connecticut. You have created a uniform predictable regulatory environment to allow investment innovation to happen in the state. And I think that the way that we work, live, play, and learn today in Connecticut is a direct result of that predictable, light-touch regulatory environment. In terms of privacy, I would like to make it very clear, despite what some people allege, that no ISP has the ability to follow the vast majority of web traffic that happens online. And there are many factors why any company, an ISP or others, cannot see what happens when someone goes on a website, the conversation earlier with Mr. Hanser about going on CNN. Encryption is the number one reason why. Once someone goes to a website and they go and search for, say, khaki pants to buy for their mother or their father, that is an encrypted, protected transaction that no one can see, particularly ISPs, without the customer's permission. Next, on net neutrality, you heard that for, the FTC has brought over 500 enforcement actions against various online entities, but only one against ISPs. You've heard no FTC enforcement actions against ISPs. And the reason why is because we haven't violated our, those very strenuous and clear and transparent policies that we have been living under for the next, last 10 years, and we will for the distant future. And finally, I'd like to close by saying, by looking a little closer to home and what's happened in the states, in the other New England states, there has been, and I don't think this is overspeaking, overstating, there's been no momentum to pass any of, either of these bills throughout the other states. And I can say specifically in New Hampshire, which is democratically controlled in the House of Representatives and in the Senate, a bipartisan House Committee had net neutrality in front of them, and they voted unanimously, unanimously against the bill. And I think that it's very clear why. The sponsor went in and testified and said, "I encourage my fellow colleagues to vote against this bill, my bill." And the reason is because when you've learned what the facts are, what the actions of our companies and the way that we adhere to the law, there's no need for state action because of the safeguards that are in place that you've heard about today. So with that, I will close and take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrew? Andrew Kingman? Followed by Alexandra Isaac.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. My name is Andrew Kingman. I'm an attorney with DLA Piper and our Global Data Privacy and Cybersecurity Practice Group. And in that capacity, I'm counsel to the State Privacy and Security Coalition. We're a coalition of 21 companies and six trade associations in the payment card, retail, technology, media, and communications sectors. Given the number, the amount of testimony that's already been given, I'll truncate my remarks and refer you to my written testimony. But I'll be, I'm here to testify today in opposition to SB 6, and in particular, I'll be addressing the ISP privacy provisions of the net neutrality bill. If I could have the, if I could ask the committee to have only two takeaways today on this point, it would be this. The first being that there is no gap at the federal level to regulate ISPs. And the second is that if ISPs or any other company in the state today made misleading, deceptive, false statements, if they violated the terms of use or the privacy policy that they disclose to consumers, the Attorney General today in Connecticut has enforcement authority to bring an action against them. So we oppose this legislation because ISP privacy legislation by a state is unnecessary and also because it would place Connecticut alone in creating this regulatory burden. In the past three years since 2016, over half the states in the country, 28 states, have considered this legislation many multiple times, like Connecticut has, and not a single state has passed this legislation. ISP privacy bills have been touted as a response to the repeal of the FCC rules in April 2017. But this is a misnomer, this is false. The FCC rules never took effect. So the protections that were in place prior to those rules publication are still in place today. Now that the FCC has restored its longstanding classification of broadband service as a lightly regulated service, and the Ninth Circuit, in a case last February, determined that the FTC has authority over common carriers' ISP services, the Federal Trade Commission has reasserted its oversight and enforcement authority over ISP privacy practices. And in that Ninth Circuit decision, the court agreed with the FCC's position that the Communications Act and the FTC Act fit hand in glove to ensure that there is no gap in the federal regulation of telecommunications companies. So claims that congressional action preventing the FCC broadband privacy rules from taking effect has somehow freed ISPs to sell consumer data are simply false. All major ISPs have designed their privacy practices based on the longstanding FTC privacy framework, which my colleagues have also referred to today. This includes guidance on transparency, choice, and requiring opt-in consent for sensitive categories of data, such as health information or precise geolocation information. ISPs have also already committed to ISPs' privacy principles, which are linked to in my written testimony. These emphasize transparency, consumer choice, and data security, and are based on and consistent with the FTC privacy framework. And moreover, many ISPs have publicly affirmed that they do not sell personal web browsing histories. From an enforcement perspective, ISPs are subject to regulation and enforcement at both the state and the federal level. The FTC has authority under Section 5 to bring enforcement actions, and I would refer you to the GAO report that came out just a few days ago, as well as the FTC's 2017 report, which listed actions of the very type that consumers are concerned about, misuse of data, misleading claims in terms of, you know, how companies treat data, to assure the committee that the Federal Trade Commission is sort of the cop on the beat here. Moreover, Connecticut also has consumer protection statutes that give the Attorney General authority at the state level to provide, to initiate enforcement actions against the same kind of privacy and data security. But both of these can be done on a technology-neutral basis. And again, just in closing, I'd refer the committee to my more detailed written remarks, but would just emphasize again that no other state has opted to go down this road. And I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony. Just with reference to your comment about the cop on the beat, could you quickly, for the record, just summarize what actions the FCC and the FTC have actually taken in recent years? What demonstration do we have that they're actually performing?
Sure. And again, I would refer to the two documents, the GAO, excuse me, the GAO report that was just released five or six days ago, and then the FTC's report that was released in February of last year that provides some detailed enforcement actions. But the FTC has taken over 500 enforcement actions, taken over 100 in the last decade, and the GAO lists, and the FTC report lists those types of cases. So I would just refer the committee to those documents. But they're of the type of companies that have violated their privacy policy disclosures to consumers, that have, you know, head apps that were collecting consumer data without properly disclosing it to consumers, those types of actions.
Well, thank you for that. I would just describe that as sort of a good news, bad news. On one hand, they are enforcing, on the other hand, there's demonstration that there are those abusing it out there. So it does sort of put it in perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I have a quick question. Would you say, is there a gap between the regulation between ISPs and edge providers in their own data privacy?
In their own data practices?
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you mean. I think, I think both edge providers and ISPs, you know, understand both the importance of privacy to consumers and also the market forces that come from improperly treating, you know, improperly exposing customers' data or, you know, being subject to data breaches. And I think both edge providers and ISPs are working incredibly hard to ensure that consumer privacy is at the forefront of the actions that they're taking.
Any other questions? Representative Winkler?
So the Attorney General of the State of Connecticut can enforce the promises you make in your service agreements. But I have received changes in my service agreement from time to time. Do you have to seek anybody's approval to make changes in those service agreements?
You do not have to seek the Attorney General's approval. I would imagine that there are probably some cases in which you, in which you might have to, but I wouldn't want to speculate on those.
I wasn't asking about the Attorney. I was thinking PURA or somebody like that. When you say lightly regulated?
I don't believe that PURA, I don't believe that PURA would be regulating ISPs.
I agree.
Given that, yeah, so.
I agree. So basically, you can, in essence, change the promises you make at will.
Well, so in my practice, I also draft privacy policies for clients. And what the general practice would be, and I can't speak for every company, certainly, but what the general practice is, is that you make sure to notify consumers as you've been notified when there are changes in a privacy policy. But very often, those are, very rarely to do with how consumer information is processed. And again, when it comes to how ISPs treat consumer data, they're governed by the FTC's privacy framework, which understands that there are some functions which consumers expect, and we've talked about them, you know, multiple times today, going, visiting CNN.com, fulfilling orders that I request, having a company that I have a direct relationship provide, you know, marketing to me or letting me know of a promotion unless I want to unsubscribe from that email. But that for categories of sensitive data, that that would require opt-in consent. So those types of distinctions would not, aren't really, are governed more by federal practice and ISP's commitment to privacy principles rather than necessarily what would be in their privacy policy. What's in their privacy policy would be reflective of the federal principles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Followed by PURA Ford.
Good afternoon, Chairman Acquanti, Chairman Needleman, Ranking Member Ferraro. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and speak today in support of House Bill 5382, which concerns the assessment of Siting Council on electric suppliers. And also Ranking Members and Distinguished Members, thank you very much. Starion Energy. Starion Energy is a retail energy, electric, and gas supplier located here in Connecticut. We do business in Connecticut as well as eight other states and the District of Columbia. We service residential, small business, and commercial customers, and our offices are located right here in Middlebury, Connecticut. We've been a company in operation founded here in Connecticut for the past 10 years. Happy to say that. I wanted to let you know that Starion does not own any generation facilities. Starion does not own any transmission facilities. Starion has no business whatsoever that comes before the Connecticut Siding Council. In fact, we've reviewed the dockets for the last 10 years that have come before the Siding Council, and no supplier issues have come before the Siding Council in the last 10 years. However, each year pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Siding Council issues an annual assessment to Starion as well as all other suppliers. It's Starion's belief that the intent of the statute which allows them to do this was created to provide for an assessment against the two incumbent utility companies who are often before the Siding Council. However, the wording of the statute calculates the assessment based on revenues from sale of electric power, which because of the growth of suppliers within the state of Connecticut and our businesses here, has allowed suppliers to come under and to be incorporated into this statute to allow the Siding Council to issue an assessment against suppliers. The annual Siding Council assessment is simply just another tax on Connecticut businesses. Businesses should not be forced to pay a tax for government agencies that do not govern or oversee any of our functioning within the state. For this reason, I ask that, and I encourage, that all of the members vote in favor of passing House Bill 5382. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Anybody have any questions? Representative Ferraro?
Thank you, Alexandra, for testifying in that wonderful bill. I do just have a question that you might be able to shed some light on. If the providers there, the companies were to be removed from the Siding Council and not including the larger generations, UI and Eversource, what do you anticipate the total loss of revenue would be?
Sure. We looked back into prior years to be able to gather that information for you, and so the 2017 was the last complete year we were able to pull records for, and we believe that number is about $200,000 on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Going to try this name, Pua Ford? Correct. Thank you.
That was close. So Senator Needleman and Representative Ferraro, please give the other chairman and ranking members my regards. My name is Pua Ford, and I am the media special, issue specialist for the League of Women Voters of Connecticut, and I'm here to support SB 6, HB 5990, and HB 6419, as well as Senate Bill 677. A lot is said about net neutrality. I really thought Ellen Katz had her finger on it. I'd like to quickly mention that the, our support of net neutrality is based on a study that was done at the national level with league members from Connecticut, California, Kansas, Texas, and a couple of other states that escaped me. This was back in 2006. So the study, the study's a little old. Net neutrality, I think, is eternal. I'm glad that businesses include that in their terms and conditions to the customers, but I would really like more plain language in that and maybe larger type size. And that's all I have to say on that. On the bills, 677 and 6419, I understand that my friends over at Community Voice Channel have done research on what it might cost Comcast to give them an HD channel. I know that they do exist for public access channels in, Comcast gave one to Philicam in Philadelphia. A couple of the smaller cables in Boston, Chicago, and Manhattan also have HD channels. If you don't want to look at this for this year, you might consider letting PURA have a study about it. Finally, on 5990, that's asking for an expansion of the per-subscriber base that provides the operating funds for community access television, especially for the public. You all know about cord cutting. You all know people who do it. I have two kids who do it, have done it. They're off that. And because of the way traditionally the operating funds for community access have gone down substantially across the nation and in Connecticut, our community access providers don't have as much money to pay their staff and keep things going. Now, since Public Act 07253, Connecticut no longer does franchise renewals. They no longer review how cable companies provide for customer service as well as public access. So there has been no opportunity for them to upgrade their equipment except by saving as much as they can and from the PEGPedia fund for capital. If you could quit sweeping PEGPedia, and certainly not for each fiscal year thereafter, you probably wouldn't have to do anything about the per-subscriber fees. Done.
Thank you so much, and sorry for the mispronunciation.
It happens all the time.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah? Not sure if I got that right from AARP.
That's it. I figured. When you botched, we're about to botch the other name. I thought it was going to be mine, so I started to get up. Because usually mine that gets botched, but I appreciate it. Senator Needleman, Representative Ferraro, and members of the committee, John Erlinghauser from AARP, I'm the Advocacy and Community Outreach Director, testifying against Raised Bill 847, the Telephone Deregulation Bill. We did submit written testimony. I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that were brought up earlier in the hearing, particularly by Representative Winkler and some things that were said by Representative Cheeseman. I want to be clear, there is absolutely no visionary point or public good to this piece of legislation. There's nothing in it that's good for consumers. And, you know, Frontier talks throughout their testimony about this being a leveling of the playing field between them and their competition. But state statutes have determined that they are the phone company, and you can only get a phone one of two ways, as was pointed out through the questioning of Representative Cheeseman, and that's either through Frontier or through the cable company. And the only right you have to get a phone is through the telephone company, which by statute is Frontier, or in the case of Greenwich, Verizon. And so the cable companies do not guarantee you a right to get a phone. And so the customers, which, to address what was the questioning from Representative Winkler earlier, this bill actually impacts about 320-some-a-thousand people. And those people are either people that are in rural areas, low-income minority constituents who rely on traditional landline phones that are protected under state statute. Those protections would go away, many, most if not all of them in this legislation. So I think it's important to understand who's being impacted by this, and then the fact that there is really no plan for what to do with those people that are going to be impacted when their protections under regulation go away. So I think it's important to know that, particularly because, you know, there's this misnomer that we're just leveling the playing field between the phone company and the cable companies who are their competitors. At best, you have a duopoly, and if you can, if you do not have the rights guaranteed under regulation from Frontier, you cannot necessarily be guaranteed a phone from the phone company. And many seniors and low-income people can't afford an expensive bundle of options that you would have to buy in order to get the telephone service from the cable company. So it's that, for those reasons why we continue to oppose this piece of legislation. And until there is some plan to address what happens to the over 300,000 people impacted by this bill, we'll continue to oppose it and have for many years. Hey, I beat the bell.
Thank you, John. Kept it right under the timer. Anybody? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony today. What would you like to see going forward, knowing what Frontier is looking for? Do you see a happy, I mean, obviously, the concern of this committee, or certainly my concern, is always to protect our citizens, our residents. I mean, my father has a landline and a cellphone which he keeps for when he's used in the car and has turned off all the time. I'm one of the dinosaurs who still has a Frontier landline, so I understand that. On the other hand, I can see Frontier's desire to move with the times. Certainly, there were a long list of elements of that statute that did seem to be outdated. Is there room for a middle ground here?
I think there could be a room for a middle ground if we could, while enacting this legislation, come up with some sort of plan to protect those that are going to, must definitely be impacted by this bill, because, you know, Frontier can testify that they won't raise rates, but there is a process right now for any request by them to raise rates. And with this piece of legislation, there is no longer that process. And I will say that not only, you know, there are many people, for example, where I lived in Seymour, and I lived in, you know, for my area, the state was somewhat of a rural area, in the condominium complex I lived in, you couldn't get cell service. The minute I got anywhere within a mile of my complex, I no longer could use my cellphone. And, you know, I, at various times, got my phone either through Frontier or the cable company Comcast, but for many of the other folks, that was not an option. So I do think there is, but if you, when you read our written testimony, you'll see that is one of our concerns that we, you know, if we're going to take this action, then we can't take the action and then say, okay, later on, we're going to worry about the impact it has on people. So that's what our biggest troubling concern is about this legislation. We have to come up with a plan for how we're going to deal with those folks first, and then we take this action, not the other way around. And that's always been one of our big concerns. So if we can come up with that plan on transition for the impacted parties, which, you know, I think we're going to continue to disagree about the number because it's not, you know, 3,000 people, it's more like 300,000 people, then I think we can, we can say, okay, it's time to move forward.
Well, thank you for that, and I would love to see some collaboration, because I agree with you, for the people who are going to continue to rely on that landline. And to be honest, one of the reasons I've kept mine, if the power goes out and I can't charge my cellphone, I want a way to communicate with the outside world. I know I'm a dinosaur. I get it. But I also see Frontier's point, particularly in view of the competition there shrinking more, you know, and I would hope that there could be some way to acknowledge your concerns, the need to protect those people who really have no other option for whatever reason, but also to alleviate some of the concerns that Frontier has.
And that's appreciated, Representative Cheeseman. And I hope there is a day when I don't have to continue to come before the committee to make this case, but every year, and Representative Ackert smiling because he was the ranking member, and, you know, we've had this conversation before, and it was, and I've been here before the committee when it was AT&amp;T, before Frontier bought the company, and they knew what they were buying when they bought it. Quite honestly, they were buying the phone company, not a cable service provider. But, you know, if we, when are we going to come up with the plan to deal with those folks before we come up with the plan on how to cut off the protections that they are afforded under state law today? And that's all I'm asking, and that's what I've been asking for the last couple of years. And I think, you know, we can, I think, get there. I'll do my best.
I would, I would love to see the wish list from both parties of, you know, what, what they really want to see, what, and if you, we put something together and you both leave equally unhappy, I think we've come up with a good piece of legislation. So thank you again for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kind of thinking we need to get back to Representative Cheeseman.
Representative Steinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Cheeseman pretty much pursued the course I was going to take. I remember back eight years on this committee when we were talking about POTS lines, and we talked about the inevitability of eventually some of those things having to go away. Here we are eight years later, and there's still, as you say, 300,000 people. But I also agree with Representative Cheeseman with regard to there has to be a way to enable Frontier to move forward and protect these people. The question I have is, anybody done any research? There must be other states that are struggling along similar lines. Has any other state put together a program that we can emulate that might actually get us halfway there?
You know, certainly, I know we can research it, and we did make some recommendations, alluded to some recommendations, and we have some thoughts that we'd be willing to put forward, you know, if there is a serious discussion. Unfortunately, every year we come, we have this public hearing, we kind of have this dialogue, and then, you know, we move forward, and it's, you know, it's either we're for this or we're against this, and we never get the point of actually coming up with a transition plan and how to deal with it. So I'm willing to work with the committee, the leadership, and Frontier, as well as the other folks that provide these services, because I think many of the solutions, all of the telecommunications providers are going to have to play a role in. And that's where the rub comes, you know, and we're not addressing VoIP or municipal gain or access to polls or things like that today. We will probably in future hearings, but those are parts of the solutions. And then, you know, those folks have an obligation to address the issue as well, and they push back in many of the potential solutions for addressing the problems. So it's not, that's why, you know, it's not an easy, you know, proposition all the time.
You raise a good point. We ask PURA to weigh in on some broad issues of reform when it comes to energy policy such as grid modernization. Maybe we need a more fundamental review of all the contributing factors in the telecommunications space.
You know, and I think last year I recommended that in my testimony was that, you know, we should have PURA actually study, you know, who the impacted parties are so we can get over, you know, we say this number, they say that number, how they're going to be impacted, what potential solutions there are, and then move forward. I would support that as an approach. I would also support what you recommended as looking at other states as well and seeing what they've done when they've taken different actions to remove the regulatory burden on the companies. Because I do, I do think we have to get to a point of solving the problem and address the concerns for both constituents and for Frontier and for the other service providers.
Well, I agree with you, and I think that time is fast approaching, so let's see if we can get it right. Thank you for your testimony.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions? Seeing none.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Next up, Gregory Davis. Followed by Stephen Mendipa.
Greetings, esteemed members of Connecticut's Energy and Technology Committee. My name is Gregory Davis. I hail from Roxbury. I have been serving as a volunteer on the Cable Advisory Council in Area 19, which is 19 towns from north to south along the Houston River Valley. In that time, I've had a fair bit of exposure to community access television culture and the challenges that it faces. I'm here to speak briefly on three bills that are before this committee that affect the future of community access. The first is Senate Bill 073, which I cannot support because the language is just way too vague and open to misinterpretation. And I believe that it completely misses the root cause of the issue that brought the parties to request legislative address. I believe that needs some serious look to actually find and address the root issue, and I believe it has to do with Connecticut's institution only having two of the three generally accepted components of community access: the public, the educational access, and the government access. In Connecticut, we only have two. Moving to another bill, which I overwhelmingly support, 6419. Please move this bill forward. It is elegant, it is simple, the language is clear, and it hits the nail right on the Once upon a time, if you might remember, the cable company, the cable channels... Once upon a time, if you might remember, the cable company, the cable channels amounting to all of 36 back in the 70s, and community access existed back then because of the support from the federal government side of it, which had one channel getting as much as 2% plus of the available bandwidth. Could you imagine community access with that much bandwidth today? But let's fast forward to 2019. And we've now had, for 10 years running now, high-definition broadcast television, commercial television mandated by law to telecast in high definition. But guess what? Community access wasn't covered by that, and they're still being transmitted in the standards that were adopted back in the 1970s. There is a consequence to this. It is caused by an improprietary application of the way the regulations are applied. But we need to stop this misdirection or lack of oversight, because it causes the public to perceive community access programming as substandard when it is not. That's unfair. The language of the bill will directly encourage PURA to take action with the multiple video program distributors, and address the Connecticut companies doing business in Connecticut that hold the Connecticut-issued license to do business, to return to the original mission as stated in the law to provide meaningful access to the community-based producers of community access television. Which takes us to the final bill, which is so important, that is 5990, which we very much support. And diversion, just imagine yourself being in Russia or China and going to a local TV station where you had access to creating a program where you advocated for human rights and free speech. In Russia and China? No, not gonna happen, just isn't. But here in America, here in Connecticut, we have that right. We do that because we have the institution of community access television. It's an important right that guarantees our right to freedom of speech under the First Amendment of our Constitution. Now, I've heard over the years, many-
Could you please summarize your remarks?
You bet. How did we get to this problem? There's been, the cable companies naturally are going to explore inventive ways to be more competitive and adopt policies that may not have legal profile to pursue, but that can always be checked out later. The counterpoint is the regulation, which is naturally going to be conservative and oppose legislative overreach, because we want to promote economic vitality. These are all good things. But in the end, what has happened is that community access subscriber fees have been misinterpreted from the original intention of the original law and been parsed and subdivided to specific services on the wire, when the way the system really works, it has everything to do with the license to do business in the state. And there's only two flavors, the CCFA, the CVFA. To do that business in the state, you comply with the regulations and the statutes for those license. And this House bill will encourage the PURA to take action, to encourage the PURA to issue the regulation, to apply, once again, subscriber fee collection that supports our institution of community access to every subscriber to the wire. Community access television is worthy of the effort to save it rather than let it wither and die. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory, for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony today. So forgive my ignorance, the way it's currently funded, a certain amount is allocated toward cable products you buy as opposed to a flat fee per subscriber?
There is what is termed, under the statutes, a subscriber fee as part of the condition of holding the license. The subscriber fee is collected on an annual basis per subscriber to the service offered by the MVBD, the Multiple Video Program Distributor, the cable company, under their license to do the business. So the subscriber fee applied to, historically, every account to the operator holding the license, that is, to every subscriber to the services provided by the cable company. And in the years since 2007, well, since everything went digital, we've got, we've now have fantastic new services available from the cable companies. And it's natural to explore the opportunity to maybe spend more in and invest in technology. But what we've forgotten is that in marginalizing the subscriber base on which the fee is collected, which was originally every account holder to the service, to saying, well, only some of those customers will pay, will collect a fee from, or collect a fee in behalf of for supporting the institution. So what's happened is that we've got wonderful new services, but we, as the public, are choosing to, go ahead.
So how do they decide whether you are being, charge a subscriber fee or not? I suppose that's what I'm, because I get my cable bill, I see all the different fees I'm charged, I'm sure there's a subscriber fee somewhere. I suppose my, so how do I have that services from a cable company and end up not paying that subscriber fee?
Well, what has happened is that the cable companies have now said that if you drop your basic video subscription, the basic video package, they will no longer collect the subscriber fee, because that is where community access was required to exist way back in the original legislation. So the, instead of collecting subscriber fees on the fact that you're a subscriber with to the wire, cable companies are only collecting subscriber fees on those who still opt for the video, the bundled video package, which includes basic video.
Basic video or basic cable?
It's the basic video package on the cable, so, which is now obviously a subset, since many of us, 30% of us, have dropped the video package in favor of other services, perhaps Netflix and so forth.
Roku's and things like that.
Correct, absolutely right.
So you still have service with a cable provider, but because you're not having the particular service for which the subscriber fee was designed, you are no longer subject to that, and the amount being collected is going down. Have I summarized?
That's very close to perfectly accurate. But originally, the fee was designed to be collected on any subscriber to the wire. And the fact that now we have digital technology, we have many new services on the wire, and just separating out and segregating just community access to be, have subscriber fee support only from the video package component, which is shrinking, has caused a real crisis coming in community access television.
All right. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for your explanation. I understand the problem better now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Stephen? Followed by Dennis Buckley after Stephen. Thank you.
Honorable chairpersons and members of the committee, for purposes of your record, I am Stephen W. Mendera Jr., President of Sky Cable 13. The licensed, community-based, nonprofit organization assigned responsibility for community access operations pursuant to general statutes of Connecticut, Title 16, Chapter 289, Section As such, Sky is more commonly referred to as a community access provider or CAP. I am here today to ask you to, I'm against proposal, Senate Bill Number 73, an act concerning third-party nonprofit community access providers and municipal programming. This will decimate the CAPS in Connecticut and take away a lot of the funding from them, and also what the things that they really do good. The committees, or, I'm sorry, the communities comprising the service area of Sky is Town of Middlebury, Town of Prospect, Town of Plymouth/Terryville, Town of Woolcut, and the city of Waterbury. Over the course of Sky Cable's responsibilities for community access operations, more than $1.8 million has been invested in the community access facility and its construction, maintenance, upgrade, and operations. We just celebrated our 20th anniversary last year. In performance and completion of its plan to, as approved by the DPUC and its decision in this docket issued on April 26, 2000, Sky Cable constructed its relocated and upgraded access facility with the capability of Cablecast 11-program video signals. Channel 13 designated by Comcast for public access use programming. Channel 16 designated by Comcast for educational access. Channel 96 designated by Comcast for governmental access. The single highest programming demand which could be made for Cablecast, the programming on the same day, same time, request could call for 11 different program signals to wit one single signal on Channel 13, five narrowcast signals on Channel 16, and five narrowcast channels on 96. Were able to take care of all this, in the 21 years of Sky's operations, such a programming demand has never occurred, but we are prepared for any eventuality. Please note that in line number eight of proposed Bill Number 73, and continuing into line nine, therefore references made to town-specific community access programming. Town-specific access programming has not escaped the attention or the legal ruling of either the DPUC or now PURA. The department does not believe that any one type of community access programming is inherently superior or prof- prof- to any other type. Neither does the department believe that it can or should rank the relative importance of desirability of any one type of community access programming compared to any other type of community access programming. That was decision Page 26, first paragraph, sentences two and three. While it is clear that residents of particular franchise towns may prefer to view town meetings and events of their own town, restricting community access programming and a multiple channel to a town-specific meetings and events to the total of nearly in nature, it is in the best interest of subscribers' decision, Page 26, section, paragraph, sentence two, emphasis added. Further, the agency and its regulations have defined municipalities as access users, not as community access providers, CAPS. And as such, municipalities have no greater rights to access channels than any other access users.
Could you please summarize your remarks?
Just wanna go, proposed Senate Bill Number 674, Sky would support enactment if the study includes consideration of existing statutory obligations concerning community access programming and financial support. Proposed Senate Bill Number 677, Sky would support enacted if this intends to have any certificate holder bear the sole cost of upgrade to what is presumably the community access facility as defined by state regulations. Is that what is meant by reference to public access stations? Proposed House Bill Number 5990, Sky supports enactment. Proposed House Bill 6419, Sky would support enactment if it is revised to make it clear that providers of channels are certificate holders, not community-based nonprofit organizations such as Sky. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Dennis Buckley? Followed by Nick Levine?
Good afternoon, honorable chairman, distinguished members of the committee. For your record, my name is Dennis Buckley. I'm a resident of the city of Waterbury, Connecticut, and for 47 years, I've been a licensed attorney in the state of Connecticut. I'm here primarily to offer testimony, and I've submitted written copies, on a proposed Senate Bill 222, bearing LCO Number 3230. But also, I have, for the 21 years that Sky Cable 13 has been in existence, functioned as its legal counsel, and I joined in the preparation of the written testimony that was submitted and briefly excerpted by Mr. Mendera as their president. So I would reaffirm our opposition to proposed Senate Bill Number 73. Very quickly, primarily, because it contradicts already available and in-force state statutes. CAPS by law have, by the UAPA standards, a license. Within Section 16, 331A, subsection C, you've already articulated how that license may be affected, and by whom. It would involve a proceeding, a hearing, a due process hearing by PURA, satisfactory of due process guarantees under both fate, both federal and state constitution, as to whether, because in effect, what this bill proposes is either a revocation, a suspension, an amendment, an annulment, a withdrawal, take your pick of the term, of take this out of the responsibility, the assigned legal responsibility of Sky, and give it to Mr. Michael Bruce. Something which he's tried repeatedly over the course of a decade, not least three times in front of PURA, once in front of the DPUC. He's been denied each time for legal reasons. I would invite you to read the testimony that we've submitted. My concern with respect to proposed Senate Bill 222, in part, is because in the course of the 47 years, twice, I've served as corporation counsel in the city of Waterbury. I've served as special counsel on given litigation matters. I've been a member and chairman of three charter revision commissions for the city. I've also been the paid legal counsel advising three other different charter revision commissions. I'm concerned that this bill and its language, which talks about create a process, quote unquote, without defining that term, concerning the subject matter of a potential sale of a municipal water supply system or a municipal wastewater system, may be construed as perhaps preempting any protections that exist at the local municipality level throughout the course of, for all I know, 169 towns, although I don't think there's that many municipal water suppliers. In the city of Waterbury, if we were to choose to sell something which we own, and a normal corollary of ownership is the ability under Freedom Contract to be able to sell something, we have the following protections by our charter. It would require a supermajority of a vote of 11 members of the 15 members of the Board of Alderman to approve a proposed sale. And there would have to be a confirming vote of approval by a public referendum of the electors of the city of Waterbury before that item could be successfully concluded. I'm concerned whether this bill, in sponsoring a process, would preempt those local protections for a locally owned asset. I understand that there may be perfectly legitimate reasons as to why this subject matter has a different purpose and a different focus, and I don't attempt to oppose that if it's attempted to relieve, let's say, small municipal systems that may be in financial difficulty. But I am concerned that if this bill, as presently drafted, were adopted, that it interferes with appropriate protections for larger municipal supply systems. Population of the city of Waterbury is 108,000. We also, by contract, supply water to the Town of Woolcut, a portion of the Town of Middlebury. We have a compact with respect to our wastewater treatment system with Watertown, with Woolcut, with a portion of Middlebury. We are to lose all opportunity for control of that municipal asset? I urge you, please, to strongly consider a revision of the language that exists within this bill. In my opinion, it goes too far, too fast, and too much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your impassioned testimony. I just have a question. I actually missed Mr. Bruce's testimony. I was out at another committee meeting.
Certainly.
And I did have some questions I wanted to ask him, but while you're here, maybe I can ask you, and I can get this out, just for public reasons only. But am I correct in that community access providers seem to be overwhelmingly opposed to this legislature, to the tune of about 73%? Is that correct? Is that correct?
That's correct, to my understanding. I can't say that I've conducted an individual poll of all members, but certainly those who have contacted me, I think, would approximate, to use your figure, roughly seven out of 10. And the primary reason for that is that they are operating underneath a license procedure that assigns to them obligations that they are to perform, depending upon how far back they go. At one time, what were written franchise agreements, if we're talking about the legacy cable system. In fact, that's the case with Sky. We had to function with, at that particular moment in time, Telemedia Company of Western Connecticut slash Waterbury. Of course, now it's Comcast that took over that particular franchise, but there was an explicit terms and conditions of performance on behalf of both the company, meaning at that time Telemedia, now Comcast, and Sky, as to how this system would be administered. And you ask your individual point. As an example, as a passing comment, the one point that I think was factually inaccurate by Mr. Bruce is he made a passing allusion to Sky and said that we had not permitted examples of the cable cast of town-specific programming. I somewhat anticipated that argument because he's made that misstatement multiple times. I have with me a copy of the signed form of request by Mr. Michael Bruce on January 30, 2019, as the executive producer to Cable Cast Live, which was done through Sky's facility in conjunction with the facility that he manages at the Wocat Town Hall, quote the name of his special legislative update town hall, at which the state senator, Mr. Sampson, participated, and the state rep that testified today were participants. That went out over the community access facility that Sky has spent more than a billion eight bucks on over 20 years to reach the subscribers of the Town of Wocat. On previous occasions, and I'll then conclude that remark, please understand that that particular governmental channel, channel 96, what a cap has as responsibility, you have a program request or demand for time, date, usage on behalf of a program producer. You don't always necessarily fulfill the 24-hour spectrum based upon the production of a program, whether live or taped. In other words, somebody's got to create that program to ask to be able to access the channel and use it. Well, channel 96 in Sky is in what we call composite use. The first priority is anybody who has a legitimate use for the G channel, government, meetings, et cetera, they're on first. But as opposed to having dead air, blank space, we've created this aspect for specials because frankly, we can't air all the program requests that we get from the P channel for public access. So specials are put on the non-used time on channel 96, available for government use. When the demand isn't there, we put the excess programs on the P on channel 96. If you go back far enough in this industry, the 1970s and into the early 1980s, the state statutes referred to public access, which was one channel, and truthfully, if you read the regs today, which were adopted in the 1970s, it still only guarantees one channel in composite use. That one channel was to be for P, E, and G. Thankfully, at least, Sky has three channels, and by what we put in, in place in 2000, we caused the differentiation to be able to differentiate and cable cast simultaneously if demand requires 11 differentiated signals. One universal signal on P, five differentiated signals on E, five differentiated signals on G. That not only exists with respect to what we wired with Comcast, we also have caused the wiring for that on Frontier. And to the best of my knowledge, and I've not surveyed every other cap, but to the best of my knowledge, if we don't have the largest signal capacity of a cap in the state of Connecticut, we're well up there.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Nick? And Betsy Garrett will be next.
Hi. My name is Nick Levine. I am in support of SB 677 and HB 6419. I am the executive director of Community Voice Channel, which is a public access station out of Bolton, and we serve the franchise region 11, which is Andover, Bolton, Ellington, Hebron, Marlborough, Tullenden, Vernon. These bills are meant to allow public access to have HD channels, which we have tried for about five years now to ask Comcast and others to allow us the right to broadcast in HD, but they have not let us and have not given us a reason as to why. I'm going to summarize most of what I've submitted, as it's just pretty technical, and I have visual aids that I will update over email so you can actually see them. So basically, the reason why is because the equipment that we have over at Our Place Community Voice Channel and at many of the other PEG stations, as you can see, that's an HD camera, and that's an HD camera, are shot primarily in HD and even 4K. I know that we have 4K for field and in for studio. And when you're taking something in 4K and bringing it back down to standard definition, that's a 95.85% reduction in quality. When you shoot something in HD, that's a reduction in 83% quality. So, as you can imagine, that doesn't look good. On top of that, when HD, let's just deal with HD, when HD goes from recording down to standard definition, where it goes to Comcast, it has that 83% reduction, which is a six times scale decrease, at which point then Comcast sends that out to the homeowner's cable box where they generally own an HDTV. In fact, they probably own a 4K TV because it's very hard to even find HDTVs for sale, and when you do, you have very limited selection, and it would seem odd to buy a $500 TV when $1,000 would get you a 4K TV. At which point, our signal is then scaled right back up to six times. So when you take an image, reduce it by six, you get a current image, then you take that image, which has been already reduced, you then increase it from the lower resolution by six times again, or if it's a 4K TV, by 24 times, also known as a 95.85% increase in quality, but that's resolution. So, in other words, our channels don't look good. And when our channels don't look good, it makes it harder to acquire volunteers and donations. When people have their first impression of us, it's generally our channel, and they think that it looks bad, and then they think that our equipment is bad. But our equipment is not bad. That is just the way that Comcast forces us to have a public face. I have actually heard people say that they don't want to make, like, let's say, a short film where I work because they don't want it to look bad. But the equipment is actually very good, and some of it is cinema grade, and therefore it would not look bad, but our channel makes people think that it will. On top of that, a widescreen SD video shown on an HDTV over terrestrial cable is shown within a box. So you have your widescreen TV at home, and you would think that your widescreen SD would fill the screen. It does not. First, it fills the original bubble screen TV resolution, aspect ratio of four by three, and then your widescreen is put into that box. So you have a box within a box, making it so you have massive black borders around your entire television, which makes everything that airs like that not particularly look very good, which, as I stated, destroys our ability to get volunteers and to get donations because people don't want to support something that looks like mud. All right, I'm good.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any questions from committee members? Representative Winkler?
Yes. So in non-technical terms, you have super HD capabilities, and they're broadcasting in old tube set definitions?
Yes.
I can understand that.
So, yeah, it's very reduced.
And has Comcast ever gotten back to you about capacity issues or any reason why?
No, they haven't. Now, generally, a cable provider puts channels on a QAM, which is a signal package, and SD channels are generally given roughly about 19. They're given a maximum of 19 megabits a second, which is low because it's an MPeg2 signal. But I know that public access stations are given generally somewhere within five megabits, although one time I complained and was able to at least get it up to eight. Now, the low-megabit structure is also a problem. I outlined it in here, as this makes it so a movement that you see in an already degraded program becomes even more degraded as the bandwidth of the encoder cannot keep up with what is on the screen. So it becomes those big blocks that you all know from even high-definition shows, like a football game, when they pan really hard and you see it all blocky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Farrar?
Thank you for putting a little humor on a pretty serious situation.
No problem.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Cheeseman began a line of questioning regarding the reason behind being denied so many years the ability to broadcast in high-def. And you alluded to it as well, that nobody seems to be giving you a reason. The, I guess the elephant in the room, the thing that stands out is, and must have something to do with capacity, which my colleague down the other end of the table alluded to. Is that potentially the problem here, is that there's only X amount of programming available?
Now...
And if you take it up with local access, other programs will be denied? I mean, I'm just trying to find out why you'd be denied over all this time.
I have heard that argument. However, that argument doesn't really hold up. As we all know, that many HD channels come and go, and in fact, there are less now than there once were. I'm sure people remember channels like that Vision, that Car Channel. Well, that's gone, so obviously that bandwidth's back. Now, actually coaxial cable, you wouldn't think has a lot of bandwidth, but it actually has a ton, and it's not a bandwidth problem because there are less channels now, there are less HD channels now, so that's not really an issue. The other issue you would claim, or they would claim, not you, is cost, but they won't give you that cost. When you, one of their things, when they come up to you and you say, can I have it? They say, no. Then you say, well, how come? Well, they go, well, because no, which is like a child response. But at which point, then you push further. Well, why? And then they will give you the, it's too expensive. That's the one I've heard the most, it's too expensive. Then you say, how much does it cost? And they say, well, we don't know. And then you say, so it's not too expensive. So I was able to get the company that sells them their equipment to give me a quote by contacting their head-end office and then learning about the equipment that we had, which was given to us by Comcast in order to send them the signal, and it turns out that it's about $15,000. Now, obviously, acting like it was well over 100 grand is how they played it, but at which point we have offered, well, what if we helped cover the cost? And they say, no. So there's nothing. They will not budge.
Thank you very much for your answer, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representative Ackert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and unfortunately, it's, fortunately, I guess, when there's good colleagues that are serving with you, Representative Winkler and Representative Farrar asked the same, covered the questions, but I thank you for being here and highlighting the issue. I am on a TV show, and I don't think anybody wants to see me in 4K anyways, but I can see that, yeah, there is a difference. I mean, when I scan my own TV, I mean, most of my first stations are all regular, non-HD, and then they convert, you know, then they get better. So we'll listen to this dialogue more, and hopefully that there is a reason that, rather than a smaller cost, and any cost is something, you know, but look forward to the dialogue, and hopefully, I haven't seen any opposition to this so far, so look forward to dialogue.
Can I just give a statement to what you said? I mean, if you had a show, jokingly, you said they don't want to see you in HD, but if you put up something like a visual aid, they want to be able to read it, and currently that's very difficult and sometimes impossible the way the signal comes out.
Thank you. That is true. We do, at times, put a chalkboard up top. It's not a really chalkboard, but you see how old I am, right? Chalkboard, and so. Thank you again for that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Representative Davis?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coming and testifying, and this would be my community Voice Channel in Ellington, and I appreciate your efforts in trying to improve it. You had mentioned HD, that's, I guess, looking at, you're being broadcast in standard definition SD right now.
Yeah.
You have the capability of broadcasting in HD, correct?
Yes, all of our equipment can output HD. The only thing that would have to be swapped out is essentially the cards that send it to and from Comcast. That's the only cost.
And would that be in 4K or just...
No, terrestrial cable doesn't do 4K. It does 1080i or 720p in extra rare cases at 720p.
They don't even do 1080p?
No, although it is listed in the ATSC standards, they don't. They can, but they don't.
And right now, I think at the last CES, they had 8K, right?
Yeah.
People, which, you know, believe that that's what continues. So theoretically, you guys are just asking to be two generations of TV behind instead of three, I guess.
Yeah. Well, to put that in perspective, that's why I gave the 4K perspective. I mean, it's fine to see 1080 content HD on a 4K TV. It just scales four times. It's quite smooth of a scale, actually. But unfortunately, when you're crushing something to SD, then scaling it by six times or 24 times in a 4K, it's an extreme change. The scaling isn't really there.
And what would you be capable of doing in 720p or...
We can do 1080i. I could actually output in 4K, they just don't, no one does that. So our equipment can handle a signal sent in 1080i, no problem. The only thing is the infrastructure, just cards on our side. By cards, I just mean it takes the signal that I'm already sending and just throws it on a fiber cable and gives it to them. It's not like, it's not like that's what creates the video.
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to say. It's a transport system.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
Betsy Garrett? Followed by Mark Dwinski?
Thank you, Chairman Needleman, Chairman Arcanti, Ranking Member Farraro, members of the committee. My name is Elizabeth Garrett, and I'm the executive director of the Connecticut Waterworks Association, which is a trade association of municipal, private, and regional water companies throughout Connecticut. I have submitted written testimony on four bills. I'm going to reserve my comments to two of those bills, and I will summarize. CWWA is in support of Senate Bill 222, an act concerning the sale of municipal water supply and wastewater system assets. This bill is aimed at creating a regulatory framework to provide additional options when a municipality isn't in a position, for whatever reason, to continue to make the necessary capital investments, which can be significant, to maintain or upgrade a system to comply with various state and federal requirements. Things like phosphorus removal, nutrient removal, upgrades relative to dams associated with stream flow regulations and so forth can be very expensive. By allowing PURA-regulated water companies to offer the municipality the fair value of these utility assets, Senate Bill 222 will provide a financially sustainable alternative for the long-term ownership and operation of the water or wastewater system, which is in the best interest of the customers. Currently, there's uncertainty in the mechanisms for determining the fair value of these assets and also in authorizing the recovery of these costs in the private water companies' rate base, and so there are impediments to this voluntary, and again, I want to stress voluntary, transfer of municipal water and wastewater assets. In response to the earlier speaker who noted that the town should retain authority, this does not in any way supplant the town's local authority relative to the transfer or sale of these assets, and that is certainly not our intention. There are a number of states, and the number is growing, it's up to 10 states now, that have recognized that this is an important process and that they have provided, adopted similar legislation. We do know that there are concerns by the Office of Consumer Counsel and PURA. We have been meeting with them to address those concerns. In order to address those issues, we have decided to move forward with specific provisions that would include requiring information from three different appraisers, authorizing PURA... PURA to actually appoint the third appraiser, using a licensed engineer to conduct the assessment, and also authorizing PURA to modify or approve the amounts recognized as recoverable in rate basis. So again, we're happy to continue those discussions and look forward to working with those agencies and lawmakers relative to this issue. And then just briefly, CWWA opposes House Bill 5015, an act concerning providing notice to homeowners of surveys conducted by municipal water systems and water companies. As proposed, this is very unworkable, it requires 72 hours advanced notice to a homeowner before entering the property. Under current law, water utilities are required on an annual basis to perform watershed surveys, and this is in order to ensure that certain activities that could end up degrading the water supply or the watershed lands are not permitted to continue. We're required to submit this information to the Department of Public Health, and unfortunately, these watersheds need to be reviewed in their natural state, and so if you provide advanced notice, unfortunately, that gives the landowner the opportunity to somehow mask the activity or curtail the activity, and as a result, we're not able to take appropriate steps to address those concerns. Be happy to answer any questions you have regarding these issues, thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions, here with committee members?
Hi, Betsy, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So, what kind of activity are you referring to that might be happening on the property?
There's a whole host of activities that could actually result in soil erosion or sedimentation, things like having livestock or animals located within 800 feet of a public water supply, having animals in the source water, you may have the storage of chemicals, oils, gas, road salt, things like that, that could end up degrading the water supply. So for example, in one situation, there was an individual landowner who was using the property to, for motocross and ATVs, and they had gas cans stored there, and they really didn't understand why that was going to cause some problems, but it ended up resulting in some soil erosion and sedimentation, and also the location of the gas cans could have created some concerns relative to the quality of the, and safety of the public water supply.
So do you have any suggestions on how to mediate between the interests of ordinary homeowners, having people walking around on their property with no notice?
It is, it is a difficult issue to address, so we talked about this at our legislative committee meeting, and we said, "Well, do you provide notice? Do you publish notice in the newspaper? Do you publish it on your website? Can you email or send out the notices?" And unfortunately, what, with what is happening relative to people coming into communities and posing as utility representative, that is a problem. The companies, the water companies do require their water utility representatives to have an ID, they, even if they're contracting out with land surveyors or others to do the inspections, the trucks or vehicles that they use must have a placard indicating that they are associated with the water company. As indicated by the individual, the constituent who provided the testimony, they typically will knock on the door, let the homeowner know that they're there, or leave some kind of door hanger information, so that they understand why they have entered the property, but we are a little nervous about opening the door for fraud by doing some kind of blanket statement that they are in fact going to be in the area. But we're, you know, certainly willing to talk about how we can address this, but again, it's the advance notice that could be problematic.
How many of butters, this is only to do with public water supply, how many of butters actually are there?
Well, I'd have to get that information, but as you know, water companies own vast tracts of lands, many of which are considered watershed lands, and so it could be significant, but I can get additional information on that to you.
I just think if I owned one, maybe if there's a way to let people know ahead of time that they are in that subject area and their property is subject to people walking around on it once a year.
Right, and I do think, as the constituent testified, that he was aware that the land was located within a public water supply watershed, and the water company did notify the local police authorities that there would be people conducting these surveys during that time. So I think we can certainly look at whether there's some other way to do it, but again, the advance notice is the concern, and making sure that we can determine whether or not there are any illicit activities or activities that they may be unaware could pose a risk for the public water supply.
I think your concern has to do with not people who are unaware that they're doing something, but people who are aware of it and want to hide it once they get the advance notice.
That has been an issue, yes.
Thank you, Senator, any other questions? Representative Ackert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your testimony. What would be the genesis of you going and doing actually a survey? Would it be a complaint or just standard...
We're actually required by the State Department of Public Health, both by statute and regulation, to perform an annual watershed sanitary survey inspection, and there's a form that has to be completed noting whether or not any of these activities are present on the property.
Okay, so then you would actively go on a yearly basis to these properties, homeowners' properties, already?
Yes, we've been doing it for years.
So a new, a current landowner has had this process done on a regular basis, if they've owned the property for 10 years, they've had nine to 10 visits?
Yes. It's very important of the company's source water protection efforts, because it's obviously more cost-effective to address the potential concerns to the water supply, rather than then have to address it via treatment or some other mechanism.
Yeah, completely understand, and when reading on this, without that information there, I would have just said, "Stay off my land", myself, but now knowing that this is a regular process that has been done, and I would imagine that a land transfer would have that specified in a land transfer, and hopefully, it's, you know, it's probably in their land records.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mark? Followed by Lauren Craig?
Well, my name is Mark Dewinsky, and I'm President of Community Voice Channel, located in Bolton, Connecticut. I'm here to discuss the bills for 677 and 6419. And I can kind of shed a little bit more light on everything. Approximately about three years ago, I contacted Comcast, and to find out what we can do for our station to become, to be broadcasted in high-definition. I spoke with John Barros, who was a senior manager at Comcast. He told me, "As long as we can produce our shows and broadcast it out in high-definition", and he's like, "We'd have no problem, we'll air it in high-def." So it took us a couple of years, we had to, we got grants, we did fundraisers, all that kind of stuff, raised over $100,000 to upgrade our studio so we can broadcast in high-definition. At that time, John Barros is no longer with the company, so I had to go with his predecessor, which is Matt Skane, which is a new manager, and I had a long conversation with him, and pretty much told me that Comcast is not in the position to broadcast any public access channels in high-definition. So I was like, "Thank you for your time, and I'll go to your next, I'll go to your supervisor", and spoke to Sharon Codine, and got the same result from her, and her response was, "We don't have to, because it's not the law." So that's pretty much why we're here today, they are only going to do what is required of them. Now, Community Voice Channel, all public access channels, or at least us, we produce, we allow people to learn how to produce shows, documentaries, air things like farmers' markets and things of that nature. And like Nick had said before, we have a lot of people that come to us, do shows dealing with referendums, budgets, and they're having charts and graphs on there, and our main concern is people can't read it, and they call us, and they're like, "We can't understand what was put up there, because it's so choppy." So standard definition formats for this video are very poor, like Nick had talked about, and, you know, our communities are asking for better quality. The cable providers should provide, or should be required to provide the same level of service to public access channels that they provide to other channels. By falling back on their promises and not allowing the public access channels to be aired in high-definition, Comcast is holding back our progress and sending out a message that public access stations are not important. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Are there questions from the committee members? Representative Davis?
Thank you, and thank you, Mark, for being here and waiting the, I know you've been here over five hours now to give your testimony, and I think it's an interesting case of, you guys, it appears to me, have done the right thing, right? You went out, you raised the money yourselves, $100,000, not an easy thing for Community Voice Channel to be able to raise, and you were able to accomplish that and make those upgrades yourself, to just be denied at the end of the day from being able to provide the service to the citizens of our community. And I'm wondering, are you also available on Frontier FiOS?
We are, we are on Frontier as well. Frontier, again, doesn't make it as easy, you have to look through, and Nick can kind of more or less give information regarding how to find it on Frontier, but Comcast is our main way to find it, yeah.
And they won't allow you to do HD on FiOS as well?
I don't believe so, again, especially with Frontier, to find it, it's actually pretty complicated, you have to go through all their files and trying to find where public access is, and then you just, you know, click the button.
And are you aware, do you know, that if CTN is now broadcast in HD on Comcast?
What is CTN?
The Connecticut Television Network, the state government...
I don't know that.
Network, yeah.
They are not.
They are not as well?
Yeah.
So they're not broadcasting any, even though we have upgraded with millions of dollars of state bonding to these beautiful HD cameras above and behind you, I guess, perhaps maybe they're not broadcasting in HD either.
That's correct.
And right now, it's simply a matter of them allowing it to be broadcast in HD?
That's correct.
And you were told that they wouldn't allow it, in part because they're not required to allow it?
They are only going to do what they are required to do, they told me.
So this law would thus require it?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, any other questions? Representative Cheeseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I was not here when NECTA presented their testimony, but I'm just looking at some of the parts, and obviously, they have their case, but there seem to be real prohibitions with regard to federal regulations, and they cite the Cable Act. FCC concluded this provision means local authorities may not control whether a cable operator uses digital or analog transmissions, one would think that would also apply to mandating the use of HD, and I'm just curious as to, you know, in your view, what is the governing authority? Are we to be bound by this? Because if I'm to take NECTA's testimony at face value, it would appear we're really not authorized to do that, so I'd like your input.
What Comcast had told me is the regulations that were back in the 70s, that was before HD was ever presented, they're going by that. They're saying, "We are, we are only going to give you what we were required to do by law." And that's why we're here today, because they are kind of tying our hands and saying, "All we're going to do is what you guys have told us, you know, by law, we can do." And that's why we're trying to get it now up to the 21st century and broadcast in HD.
And again, you purchased the equipment, you're, so you would be filming in HD?
Correct.
So all that you're asking is that it be transmitted in HD?
That's it.
They don't have to buy the new equipment?
No, we have, we already have all the equipment, so all they have to do is allow us to broadcast it out on their, on their fibers.
And Comcast, does Comcast have a reason they, why they're not doing it? Is it, as NECTA maintains, it's, this is going to increase cost to consumers and so on and so forth? I'm just curious, I mean, it seems to me, and I am not a technician, you know, you flip a switch or something, but...
Well, again, I think...
I'm obviously far too naive.
It's a little bit more complicated than that, or at least that's what they're telling us, but pretty much, it's pretty much certain cards in our software going into cards into their software, so they can read it in high-definition. So there is a little cost involved, not a ton, we spent pretty much all the money for making the upgrades. They don't really have a good reason, they never really told us the good reason for that.
I would certainly be interested in seeing the specifics of what their increased costs were. I mean, if they're going to come back and say it's going to add 50 bucks to everybody's bill every month because it's so expensive, I can see their point. On the other hand, if it's something that's relatively minor, it's a one-time fix and it's spread across the cost of all the cable subscribers, then I think it's, their case is harder to maintain.
One thing that, again, they don't pay for anything with the public access, it all comes out of the individual subscribers, so they pay for that, the individual subscribers pay for that. But in regards to the cost, I think we were estimating a cost of about like $10,000 to $15,000.
So in the grand scheme of things, not a huge sum of money, and certainly much less than you've paid yourselves for the...
Correct.
...the equipment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, any, Representative Winkler?
Yes, do cable channels exist because of state law or federal law? Do public access channels exist because of state law or federal law?
I believe for state law. Is it federal? Federal law, thank you.
Now, I used to deal with electronic cards for a living, they were more for telephone systems than, but price of $15,000 for a card is high, but let's just say that's the price. Given the economics involved here, that would seem to be small change for an outfit like Comcast.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Lauren? Followed by Skylar Haynes?
Hi, good morning, Representatives, Senators, we've been here for a while, and I'll try to make this quick, I'm here to provide testimony for SB 677 and HB 641, which Nick and Mark just discussed. My name is Lauren Elsie Craig, I'm from Marlboro, Connecticut, I'm a member of the Board of Directors from the Community Voice Channel in Bolton, and I've been a volunteer there for over a decade. Our channels, as well as public, other public access channels, exist so cable subscribers can both produce and watch content that is of interest in their specific communities. In a time when technology is expanded at an ever-increasing rate, is it at best difficult for me to understand why the cable providers are lagging in maintaining current technologies for public educational and governmental television? I am a TV film writer, a producer, and a director, I executive produced the documentary Born to Lead Jim Calhoun, about the now-unretired former UConn men's basketball coach. My personal commitment is to create compelling quality content which entertains and educates viewers. I'm immensely proud to be part of the fact that Community Voice Channel in Bolton has a new state-of-the-art 4K studio, which we've heard about. But unfortunately, as you know, the provider we broadcast on refused to provide us with the necessary equipment to broadcast in HD. "So what?", you might say. Well, the HD-broadcasted shows, as we know, are not crisp and easy to watch, the charts and detailed graphs are difficult, if not impossible, to read. The reality is that these bills require them to, cable providers, to provide public access stations content which was written over 20 years ago and do not reflect the current technology, long before HD was even thought of. I'm not sure, but you'll get this through my electronic submission, I'm not sure that these pictures are worth a thousand words, but the eight SD show coming through, I suspect, is worth thousands of subscribers over the course of a year. As a CVC volunteer and board member, we work hard developing community events and programs encouraging people to tune in, and when they say this, they tune out. In whatever device you see this on, attached to my testimony, you'll be able to tell the difference. This is the SD, this is the HD. Public access television is extremely important for open dialogue in a country, a state, and communities that question news and other content agendas. I support SB Bill 677 and HB 649, because I believe cable providers in Connecticut should be required to provide the same level of service to their public access channels as they provide. People watch our station so much more than you think. What I learned for... What I learned firsthand when I started producing shows, that people like, know they love seeing local events, local issues, and local friends. With more crappy reality shows than I can name that are broadcast in HD, I might add, it's refreshing to think that people will pick the Hebron Fair over their Kardashians. Please pass these bills so we can broadcast in HD. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you so much. Skylar, followed by Mac Leiter.
Hello, my name is Skylar Haynes. I'm a senior at Ram High School, and I am today with the Community Voice Channel as a volunteer, or CVC, in Bolton. And I'm also speaking in support of the Senate Bill 677 and the House Bill 6419. I don't have the humor or the technical details that they have, as you can see, but I'm going to take the route of passion today and hopefully describe to you why the content of CVC matters and should be shown in HD. So two years ago, I attended a CVC workshop because I had been told at my own school that the topics I felt needed to be represented in student media were too serious and controversial. Long before I walked into CVC, I knew I wanted to be a journalist, but it wasn't until I stepped into their studio that I truly became one. As a member of our school systems and spending every day with the youth of our states, I knew that what was happening in the legislative building, what was happening in our state and our nation, was not being related to adolescents in the way that it should be. There was no supplement of information and perspectives to the conversations already being held in our community on these important issues. Since I began at CVC, I have created two in-depth journalistic documentaries, one, Who Are Refugees?, which delved into the topic of refugee resettlement in the state of Connecticut, and included interviews with those at IRIS, Integrated Refugee and Immigrant Services, as well as a recently resettled refugee family here in Manchester. The second was a documentary called Connecticut's Response to Gun Violence, in which I spoke to those from every side of the gun debate, including the presidents of CT Carey and Connecticut Citizens Defense League, the executive director of CT Against Gun Violence, the mothers who have lost their children in Hartford, and Mothers United Against Violence, and Mark Barden, the father of Daniel who was killed in the Sandy Hook shooting. At CVC, I was never told that these were too serious or controversial. Instead, the incredible people who believe in the mission of public access channels gave me a camera and said to follow my passion and use my voice. My series at the channel is entitled Speaking Through Stories. The purpose was to find perspectives, capture truths, acquire knowledge, engage dialogue, and be a voice for the voiceless. And as you can tell, there were very important stories being told in SD. Yet, when our channel looks pixelated, messy, and low-quality on your television, it's easy to flip past it, to believe that the stories being told on that channel aren't quality because the picture itself isn't. I'm here to tell you that there are quality, important stories being told on that channel, discussions waiting to be started. And I did not get told what I had to say and share as a student journalist was too serious so many times to then find a platform to share it and people not take it seriously. And I would also like to point out that you and the laws you pass and the history you're making in this building, your stories are being told on this channel and being shown in SD, but are not taken seriously due to our lack of high-definition picture. With the work that every single one of us at CVC and at the many public access channels in Connecticut put into sharing these perspectives and stories of our state and nation, we deserve to be taken seriously, not flip past to the next channel. So please, give our stories a chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Skylar. Any questions from the committee? Representative Ackert?
Mainly a comment. First of all, thank you for volunteering on the stations. We need more volunteers doing that, and I'm glad today was a school holiday so you could be here and spend multiple hours with us. Keep up your passion on this, and hopefully that everybody will take your story seriously, regardless of what venue you're on. So, thank you, and thank you for your passion.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Seeing no further questions, thank you.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about Senate Bill 677 and House Bill 6499. You've already heard a lot of what I'm going to say, so I'm going to refer you to my written testimony, but I'm going to address some things that...
Could you just identify yourself for the record? Just say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mal Leiter. I'm a resident in Hebron, retired from the electronic industry, and have been a volunteer and a board member for several years with the Community Voice Channel in Bolton. So anyways, I'm going to decode a few things that there were several questions on, and when we asked, when it was asked, what needs exactly to happen? If you take the old telephone cans and the wire, I'm sorry, and the string, we provide everything to the first telephone can. The telephone can puts it onto the wire, brings it to Comcast, and then they put it out to all the homes. When we talk about a card, that's an electronic piece of, or an electronic device that decodes the signal we put out, runs along the fiber, and then their can encodes it back so that they can broadcast it. So, we are not asking for any help within the studio, as has already been said, but why HD? With the increased pace of our daily lives, if we look around, we can see that all communications are going away from written and newspapers and other tabloids, and people demand more data more quickly. And that's true for our residents. We're in rural communities where we have kids, we have social events, we have other public events that often conflict, especially with a young family that has children, these schedules often have conflicts. We do an awful lot of filming, and I say "we," our volunteers do an awful lot of filming of all the events. So if I can't make a town meeting because I, my son has a baseball game, I could see it on Community Voice Channel. Our towns more and more are using public access, Community Voice Channel, to show both their school budget presentations, their town budget presentations, and anything that's going on in town. We've recently started a show, well, about a year ago, I think, we started a show with the first selectman of Ellington. She's on every month. I produce a show with Senator Austin. She gets on about current events, interviews people that have something to do with what's going on, or bills, or resources in the state. She's done about 36 of those shows. It's a great way, and she gets a lot of viewership. It's a great way to communicate. When you can't read a chart on the screen, when you can't read a spreadsheet, as has been previously testified to, you get the idea that this is Mickey Mouse. Well, it's not Mickey Mouse. It's a means of communication that our public demands, and we ask you just to assist us in adjusting laws so that we can get what we need. We have gone, as Mark disclosed earlier, we've had many conversations with Comcast. In fact, I have a CD in my folder here, if someone would like to listen to it, of a conversation. And we have directly asked for pricing. We've been told yes, we'll give it to you, then we've been told no. We've been passed off to managers who don't call us back. We have no other choice than to come through to you, the legislature, to address this. This is, this would be an update to bills that are, at best, 25 years old. So, that's my testimony. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can. If not, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Bruce? Kathy Sherman? All right.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Kathy Sherman. I have been a producer for the local cable. I have also done many films. I'm also on the Video Core Committee and have been on several boards and commissions, and as such, I'm an advocate of transparency in government and transmission of local information. Therefore, I'm very much in the favor of Bill 72, I'm sorry, 73. This bill will allow individual municipalities to be notified of important events or emergencies on a local event, a local level. This will be of no cost to the towns or state, except for the initial cost of the video equipment, which may, which many towns like Wilket already possess. We are asking to remain, we are asking to remain a user of a community access provider. We are not asking, as a user, we're not asking to be a cap. We don't want to get any, we don't require any money. All we are really looking for is a narrowcast channel, so that we can have like a scroll stream, so everybody can see what's going on in Wilket. Everybody can get the local events, everybody can get the local weather, you know, all things like that. There's an ability to do it. Schools do it, you know, on a whole nother channel, and they get their 24/7 access. But for some reason, governmental access does not seem to be able to do that. Okay, State Statute 16.331FF allows narrowcasting in certain areas on the shore, but it is narrowly worded so that it only pertains to those specific areas and does not offer the same benefit to other municipalities. We are asking that all towns in the state of Connecticut get the same advantage. This has come before PIRA twice and defeated. They thought it was of their purview, and without legislation, this cannot happen. So they said, basically, we had to get legislation. So that's why this bill is on the docket. It was stated that this seems to be too broad, but all we're asking, nowhere here says that we're going to get any money for this, and it's not like, we're not looking to be a cap. You know, all the towns cannot, they don't have to be a cap. We're not looking for license, we don't go for a license, we just want to be able to narrowcast for our little town, Wilket. That's all it is. But by doing this, all the towns in the state will be able to do that. You know, so it's just defining our usage. We've asked a cap. We said, can we do this? And they said, well, it's not required by law, therefore, we don't have to. And they don't. So, PIRA seems to think everybody should just get along, but in our case, it doesn't seem to be happening. Thank you very much for your time. And is there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming up. Mary Kelly? Followed by Joni Sutter?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and all your town committee, and all your committee members up here. My name is Mary Margaret Kelly, and I am the chairman of the Wilket Economic Development Commission, along with being a member of our local video committee. I think most of us here this afternoon have heard many, many testimonies as to why we should have open access to our local TV stations on a 24-hour basis. Mine, I wanted to present to you what it would mean to us on a Wilket, on a business level, where it would be able to promote interested parties in looking into the several towns. Imagine looking up onto there and seeing what we do locally. Imagine being able to look on our information, our town profiles, and look at our town populations, our tax rates, our safety, our school, our student achievements. Many people, business or residential, when they're thinking of moving into a town, the first thing they're going to look at is your student achievements, your safety, your town profile. Having access to this, looking, being able to look at local parks and recreation areas, local organizations on a 24-hour access, this would be a positive connection for businesses and to promote and demonstrate their products. Unfortunately, with less people interested in newspapers and relying on the internet for all of their news in today's world, this open channel would be an enormous step up. And in closing, I would just like to leave you with one great thought, and someone over here had said it before, a picture is worth a thousand words. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony.
You made my time.
Any questions from the committee members?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thanks for your testimony. Joni Sutter? Followed by Jennifer Evans.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joni Sutter. I represent Nutmeg TV. We're in Farmington, Connecticut, and we are the regional facility for 80,000 cable TV customers. We strongly oppose proposed Bill 73. It seeks to sidestep PIRA's compliance process, which is already in place, and it would have a potential impact on all areas of Connecticut. Municipalities currently have all the TV resources that they need, so we are in opposition of 73. I'd like to talk about 6419. Video providers like Comcast and Frontier will not allow channel access in HD. We are on the HD tier, and they have us in standard definition. We had to actually pay to downconvert our signal. The technicians that come into our building tell the truth, and the truth is that they can easily put us in high definition. Massachusetts is in high definition. So if the cable company says that this is something that they cannot do, or it would be more expensive to consumers, that is not true. Providers will not engage in any dialogue with us. They will also not allow programs on the program guide in Connecticut on Comcast. Cablevision does, so on the program guide, instead of seeing local access, you would see 8 o'clock, Farmington Town Council. In the Litchfield County, they do that. Comcast will not engage in any discussion. We urge you to support proposed Bill 6419 to allow consistency across the state for high-definition channels, and that we have the highest level of service, including the program guide, for our channels. This is at no cost to state or no cost to taxpayers. I'd also like to talk about our support of 5990. We strongly support this bill. Technology is changing, and the cable companies are providing content via internet. You watch programming, I'm sure, yourself, that's coming from the internet on your TV. Cable companies are losing cable subscribers. Their transmission is different on IP. Nutmeg TV lost $16,000 alone in 2018 due to the cord cutters. We respectfully urge you to support this bill, that every customer under a license for multi-channel video providing be counted in the fee that is paid to access. So currently, that fee on the cable bill comes to access, and it wouldn't be an additional fee, it would be the same fee. So if someone cuts the cord and gets their TV program via the internet, it would still be the same fee. Our success in staying vital is imperative with this fee change.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any questions from committee members? Representative D'Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joni, for coming in and testifying. I just want to make sure I understand, with Senate Bill 73, what would be the practical implication if we were to pass this bill, which I know you're opposed to? What would it actually mean for you or for, well, what would be the... it actually mean for, for, for you, or, or, well, what would be the practical result?
Well, what it would mean is that any municipality could simply write a letter to a cap that's already been put into place and operates under PIRA, and they would be able to write a letter and then start service on them, on their own.
And, and this, this has come before this committee a couple times now?
Many times, and it's been denied every time.
And, and would you hazard a guess as to why it has been denied?
It's been denied because there's already a process in place, and PIRA has already looked at the third-party cap and done a thorough investigation, and they have been found to be fully in compliance. And so there's no reason, the town of Wilkett, and I, I don't know the people in the town of Wilkett, but the town of Wilkett does currently get the same services that the town of Farmington would get from us. And so there's no need to, to do that. And if that happens, it would set a precedence across the state. So in other words, Farmington could write me a letter and say, we would like to remove ourselves and be our own station. And the towns don't want to be in the TV business. They have other business to do. What they do want is, they want their town meetings to be on the channel, and they want more open government, and that's what they look to us for.
So, so you don't see the need for this legislation?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And, and, all right, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Jennifer? Filed by Albert.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Evans. I am the Executive Director of West Hartford Community Television, and I rise here in support of House Bill five-nine-nine-zero, House Bill sixty-four nineteen, and Senate Bill six-seventy-seven. And I'm, just want to echo the comments of my colleagues, and it's been a long day, so I just wanted to highlight a few things. One, West Hartford Community Television and our colleagues have been before this committee many times, asking for language, referring to the same quality, functionality, and equal, equal treatment. And every time we have done this, this does exist in Illinois law, and we use the Illinois language that was passed in, I believe, two thousand and ten. So don't let anyone suggest that there is not a role for the state to play in determining the quality, functionality, and accessibility of any, the way that cable-access television is delivered. Secondly, you know, when they re-envisioned community-access television and the way it was going to be funded back in two thousand and seven, no one really took into the thought that there might be fewer cable subscribers in, into that plan. And also, I think, we were always assured that we would have the PegPedia Fund as a capital plan, as a, as a, as a fund for our capital needs, and that fund is no longer viable because it's been swept for the last five years. And when you put everything together, as a community-access manager, like, I'm down two full-time employees, I do two more fundraisers, we're using every bit of Yankee ingenuity to try to figure out how to deliver these channels in a way that is, is, is useful and meaningful for our communities. And I also believe, very much so that, like, in the last week, West Hartford Community Television produced a fifth Senate debate with all four candidates on Friday. We aired a two-part series with Gisele Adamsky, who's a Holocaust survivor, and we also did a series with The Rotary on the opioid crisis. These are the issues that are affecting our community now, and you're seeing it on community-access television. And if people are doing the work to make those channels and that programming available, it should be seen in the best manner possible.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for your testimony and your passion. Are there any questions from committee members? Seeing none, thank you very much. Albert? Albert Benjen? No? Sean? I don't want to butcher your last name. Sean BQ? No? All right, so that concludes our list from everyone who has signed up to testify. Is there any other members of the public who are present that didn't sign up but wish to testify before I adjourn the public here? Seeing none, I thank everyone for coming today to testify. I thank the committee members for their participation.